Councilmember Fleming?
Here.
Councilmember Kelly? Councilmember Braithwaite?
Here.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Here.
Councilmember Newsma?
Here.
Councilmember Burns? And Councilmember Saffordin?
Here.
We have a quorum present and are ready to do our work. We begin tonight with my public announcements, of which I have none. Next is the city manager's public announcements.
Good evening, Mayor Biss, Clerk Mendoza, members of city council. I'm pleased to report that we have issued a mandatory vaccination policy for against COVID-19 for all city staff. So that was our big announcement today.
Thank you very much for your swift and decisive work on this important issue. It's, I think, important not only to keep our staff and our residents safe, but also sends a message to other large employers in the community about the importance of taking this step. So thank you very much for that. Next, we have communications from the city clerk.
I just want to acknowledge public comment from Nancy Serre. That's all.
Thank you. This brings us to public comment. This evening, everyone will be given three minutes. As usual, we begin with the individuals who signed up in person to speak in person, of whom there is just one. So we'll start with Ray Friedman.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much. It's great that we've been talking about transparency and accountability. Now we need to show residents you mean what you say and honor your campaign promises. I went to a second ward meeting hoping to have some discussion about the budget, since our new interim city manager was in the meeting, and asked why the budget had not been discussed first with residents before it got released to the public. Why would you not do this? How and when do the residents get to be part of the discussion and the process? Why are you not addressing the issue of your process being flawed? We need all public comments to be addressed. We need public discussion with all council members, the mayor, city manager, city clerk. We need a process that works for everyone, not just some. When will residents get involved with the process of choosing a new police chief, city manager, or creating a new city budget? Last week, you sent out 18 new job opportunities. Four of them can pay over $100,000. I added up only 14 of these jobs, full and part-time. They added up to approximately $920,000 per year. We already have over 800 employees. How many employees do we need to run the city? And that does not include studies or consultants. I'd like to start my budget questions with, why are we increasing the budget for 2022 by $59 million, which I did ask at the ward meeting? I don't think we had any discussion on the budget at our ward meeting, even though interim city manager said that would be a great place to start a budget discussion at a ward meeting. Good idea. We're receiving $43 million in ARPA funds, borrowing $21 million from IEPA, $20 million borrowed from Go Bonds for your WIFI loan, agreement for the water intake replacement, up to $10 million for animal shelter, $10 million for reparations that we don't know who qualifies for this program, $89.25 million for Fifth Ward TIF that we haven't had explained yet because we haven't finished the discussion on that TIF. As to where and when, we haven't discussed where, when, and how this money will be used. But we do know it would take millions of dollars out of the general fund for 23 years. Why do we keep pouring money into our new Robert Crown? $400,000 for a new park at Robert Crown. Why was that not included in the $50 million we already paid? How much are we paying to keep Crown up and running with all employees?
15 seconds.
Thank you. With new equipment, maintenance, utilities, updates, and repairs, how much money does Crown take in each month? We need to know where our money is going and for what.
Time.
Can I ask how many public commenters there are tonight? Now, total. How many people are making public comment?
There are eight.
Eight people? Okay. And you're keeping it to three minutes per person?
That's what the city council rules say.
Okay. So, okay. So I won't finish my last three paragraphs, which is sad. It's sad.
Thank you very much. We move to the online commenters, who will begin with Ally Harned, followed by Michelle Redfield, and then Mary Rosinski. All right, if Ms. Harned isn't there, we'll start with Michelle Redfield, followed by Mary Rosinski, and then Darlene Cannon. All right, it sounds like... All right, it sounds like Ms. Redfield isn't there. So let's move on to Mary Rosinski, who will be followed by Darlene Cannon, and then Elizabeth Stare.
Hi. Thank you for your time. I am here to talk about the Fifth Ward TIF. And also because it is budget time, I think that we can achieve the goals that we want to do if we plan and we budget for it. So my statement is, I think it's imperative that the city council members stop this charade that the five-fifth TIF is the correct economic vehicle for the Fifth Ward. It was proposed as a way to help African-American homeowners and businesses in the Fifth Ward become whole. And it was said that the properties in the TIF area are blighted or in danger of becoming blighted. This is just not true. And that this will help bring affordable housing, but there is no way to say how. These are all social buzzwords and goals without any action plan. Now, we all know that goals without an action plan is a plan to fail. Each alderperson who votes to move forward with this TIF will own this vote. His vote will be a vote for public deception that is attached. First of all, the TIF founders exclude the majority of residents in the Fifth Ward. Remember, all residents, businesses outside the boundaries of the TIF are not eligible for TIF assistance, which begs the question of what about all the African-American residents and businesses in the other wards? Second, many of the parcels of the TIF founders are not Fifth Ward resident-owned. In fact, there are many corporate-owned absentee-owned. And this sounds like a lot of special interests. By next week, I will have a database to show a fairly good representative of the 268 parcels in the TIF, how many are actually owned by residents living within the boundaries. Third, the TIF does not meet the criteria. It is not blighted or in danger of becoming blighted. Development investment has been blooming. Property values have been escalating. And there is no indication that the real estate market, that homeowners, investors, and businesses are hesitant to buy or develop there, any more than any other wards. I'm in the business. I've been in the business for 40 years. And I follow it all of Evanston, as well as other communities. Fourth, we know that including the already-developed 1815 Ridge Building in the TIF, so that the TIF can skim 90% of those property taxes and dump them into the TIF fund, has, with lots of big property values, I mean, promises, I apologize, is TIF abuse. And it's not okay. It's as close to fraud as you can get. Fifth, and finally, I encourage each and every one of you to have an honest, truthful discussion. Read all about the TIFs. Hope your discussion represents each and every one of your constituents, who are trusting you to act responsibly with their dollars and with their goals. We can budget for this. There is no reason that we have to have a TIF in the area for 23 years. Thank you so very much. Bye.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Darlene Cannon, followed by Elizabeth Stare, and then Dorian Price.
Okay. Thank you. Can you hear? Yeah, you can hear.
Yep, we can.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Darlene Cannon, Second Ward. And I just want to agree with what Mary says with the budget season. There are different ways that we can do, there are different things that we can do other than a TIF in the Fifth Ward. So, TIF is a tool of economic development. It, however, is not a benign, harm-free one. The choices for community development are not divestment or gentrification. There are an infinite amount of creative choices between these two. TIF has repeatedly shown itself for what it's designed to do, displace people for economic gain. That's just another way to say gentrification. We are asking the City of Evanston to be more creative and more intentional. The council should be the shield of accountability to protect us. Stand up if you see something. Say something. Do something. This TIF is, like its predecessors, is harmful by its intent design. This TIF will push out and accelerate gentrification in Evanston. This council should be bringing an anti-racist lens, not putting a nail in the coffin of the hemorrhaging of diversity. This TIF is not about an individual. It is about all of us. It will impact our community. Our elected officials are expected to protect us. The residents in particular are most vulnerable ones. You cannot vote for something that has no clear agenda and support it on a hope and a prayer that it will turn out right. We, the most vulnerable, deserve more protection, more care, and a better, more just and creative vision for our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Beth Stare, followed by Dorian Price, and then Tina Payton. And I'm not sure if Ms. Stare is in the Zoom either. Sounds like she's not at this time. So we'll go on to Dorian Price, followed by Tina Payton.
Thank you. It's my pleasure to speak tonight to the council, the mayor, and everyone who is involved in trying to make Evanston a better place. In terms of some of the confusion and some of the requests for detail, it's not overkill. It's actually essential. And when residents want to speak and they feel thwarted, Mayor Biss, I have great confidence that what you want to have happen will happen. It's just in places where it isn't happening that's a problem. And to the extent that it's associated with our current interim city manager, that's something that can be addressed directly if you choose to do that. I would appreciate that you would. In terms of SP 1, 2022, it's a proposed budget. On the request to fund or list Health and Human Services, former homelessness prevention grant program should be restored and included with ARPA grants. And that is really essential because when we're talking, the previous two speakers were talking about the fact that we kind of underestimate the need and the ways that are going to be done in ways that don't, what do you call it? Separate people, rather unify people who are all vulnerable in a particular ward. If we're going to parse out who needs more for whatever reason, that's not fair. We know that people need help, and we don't offer enough. And so that goes back to why we need to go back to Health and Human Services, which used to have funds and a grant maker, and that can be restored. Grant makers earn more than their share of their money. And we can have Health and Human Services that are community-specific, which we know we need in light of trauma, and integrated medicine, which is not easily available, even if you have insurance. And we can do that. We can partner with Northwestern or, you know. I mean, there's all these institutions we're around, of course. And then, last week, I want to say that I have every hope and confidence that ARPA funds will be expanded so that community and economic development are on equal footing. Because what you do in terms of establishing jobs will help in terms of helping residents stay in their homes and get rehabilitation done to their homes to preserve affordable housing. It's called existing affordable housing. And that's been, no one's acknowledged that. And we used to have an affordable housing program, and I don't know where it disappeared, but homelessness prevention was a big part of it. And I don't see that now manifesting in a way that's going to help the community. And I think that that should come back as a priority, is to prevent more people from falling through the system. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Tina Payton.
Hi. Good evening, mayor, city manager, city clerk, and city council. The TIF, budget, ARPA, and all other meetings that comes before you. These meetings need, you need to have meetings with the residents, not just to make a presentation to the residents, but for questions and answers by the residents, which has been allowed in the past. The budget just came out a short time ago, one week ago, I believe. And there's been no meetings, but the meeting for today. The interim city manager said at the meeting last week that citizens, if they want to make comments about the budget, they can come to this meeting and talk today, which is only three minutes. And as you can see, a lot of people were not available today. Also, the city manager said that the council will discuss the budget. So once again, you're not discussing the budget with the residents. We need some kind of forum where we can ask questions and get answers from the city manager and assisted city manager, which has been done in the past. We've had ward meetings where we've asked questions. We've had streaming meetings. And now that we're on Zoom, we should be pretty professional, where we can stream and have an ability for the public to get some answers to questions. One meeting on the budget is unacceptable. Just a couple of meetings on the TIF or ARPA is unacceptable. What you've been doing so far in these meetings is making a presentation to the public, and you do not care what the public says. You have an agenda, and you plan on not including the public. Something needs to be done different. Black Lives Matter.
Thank you very much. The people who I called on, who didn't sound like they were online when I called, were Ally Harned, Michelle Redfield, and Beth Stare. Are any of the three of you ready to give public comment now?
I'm here.
Oh. All right. Go ahead.
Am I there? I'm here now, not there. Hi, I'm Ally Harned from the Second Ward. And I had signed up to speak at Rules Committee earlier today. And just wanted to follow up that a little bit and say that, a few thoughts on that, that it was exciting to be able to talk about this democratic process that the people of Evanston want. 3,800 people signed petition to say that process. And a question was raised, who doesn't want democracy? And I think one could watch the GOP and some of the actions that they're doing right now in states across the country and see that there are a lot of people who don't want democracy and are doing a lot to try to limit democracy. And I'm listening to some of the comments tonight and hearing that people are feeling like their voices aren't being heard and that they haven't had enough of an opportunity to hear from council members and speak. So I think that EVI is an opportunity to do that. And I'm just reflecting on some conversations I've had in the last few days. And I think that we really need to think about the process of how we're doing things. And that sometimes it's important to pay attention not only to the pros and cons, but the impact of what the decisions are going to be. And so we might have votes for something or not have votes for something, but I think it's still important to listen to the people who are talking to you about it. And I just, I hope people will have an open mind and listen to the conversations that are happening about the TIF and about EVI in the future. It's just really important to be thinking about the impact of things. I am a school social worker in District 65. And I want to say that if there are disagreements between governing bodies, the people who suffer are the most vulnerable, the children and the families of Evanston. So I just really think, I hope that we are all thinking about the impact of our conversations and our actions. Sorry. It's playing video game. In everything that we do. And thank you for this time to be able to speak again. And I hope that we will have a lot of public discussion about the TIF, about EVI, and things in the future that we may agree on, we may disagree on, but we need to listen to each other. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Is either Michelle Redfield or Beth Stare online?
Beth was signed up to speak at Rules Committee. I think she is not here anymore.
All right. Well, seeing that neither seems to be online, we'll move on to the next part of our agenda, special orders of business. We're going to divide this discussion into two parts, one for the operating budget and one for the capital improvement program. So would anyone like to make a motion to allow discussion on SP 1, the proposed budget?
So moved.
Councilmember Braithwaite moves that we discuss item SP 1. Councilmember Nguyen seconds. And I believe Ms. Lewis-Laken has a brief presentation to share with the council, the community.
Good evening, members of council, Mayor Biss, Clerk Mendoza. My name is Kate Lewis-Laken. I'm the city's budget manager. And I'm just going to go through a few slides that highlight some of the key top points of the 2022 proposed budget. The budget was released last Monday, October 11, on the city's website, as well as press releases that went out. The budget, the total budget number is $355 million. My slides don't include that whole amount. So we can, you know, we'll talk about many of those, the pieces of that budget that you may want to discuss tonight. But again, just to highlight a couple of key points from my view in the slides here, and then we can come back for any questions. So just to give a brief overview of our general fund, the general fund is, of course, our largest operating fund. It includes operations for all of our city departments. And it's about 1/3 of our city's total budget. Our general fund ranges from about $110 to $115 million on any given year. Currently, for our 2022 proposed budget, we are showing a starting deficit in the general fund of $2.5 million. This comes from about $112 million in revenue, $115 million in expenses. Our proposal in the budget to solve this deficit would be to use a million in fund balance from this year's operating surplus, as well as the previous years. Our fund balance is currently strong, and we expect it to continue to be so through the end of 2021, so we can make that proposal comfortably. And then to use $1.5 million in revenue loss funding through ARPA, which was discussed a couple of weeks ago at the ARPA meeting as well. To go over just a few of the pieces that are included in that proposed budget and in those baseline numbers, general wage increases for all of our union and non-union employees are built into the budget. The inclusion of a number of positions that were held vacant in 2021 are put back into the 2022 proposed budget. So these were 29 positions that were deemed critical to our operations. We did not want to eliminate them, however. Due to the concerns from COVID and our financial situation when we were doing the 21 budget, it was determined that these could be held for one year, and they've been added back into the base budget for '22. Additionally, a couple other smaller changes that are, again, affecting the proposed baseline budget for the general fund. On the revenue side, we are fortunate to see increases in a few of our major revenue sources. That sales tax, home rule sales tax, our use tax. Income tax and amusement tax are also showing increases. Amusement tax primarily due to the addition of the streaming tax last year and the services that that captures. Our baseline revenue in the general fund has increased from the 2021 adopted budget. However, we're still quite a ways below where we were in 2019. 2019 was a very strong revenue year for us. So we're about $4.5 million below that, still expect it for '22. So definitely still lingering impacts of the pandemic, the financial impacts that we can see from that. And we've taken a pretty conservative approach to the revenue projections so that we can maintain that next year. This is a slide showing the city's property tax levy. Again, this is all in the budget books. So I don't want to overwhelm you with numbers, but just so we have them as reference during this meeting. The proposed budget includes an increase to the general fund portion of the levy. This is capturing savings that we are able to see in the debt service and pension portions of the levy. So we're proposing a flat levy overall for the city for 2022. This is a summary of our proposal on the revenue loss funding category in ARPA. And this is the exact same chart that was shown two weeks ago on October 4, when you held a meeting specifically on ARPA. So this is just an overview of all the different pieces of ARPA that are included going towards the city's operations. There are many other pieces of ARPA, as we all know. $43 million in total. This only represents a portion of those. But these are the pieces that we expect and have proposed would be going towards internal city operations in the budget, funded through, again, that revenue loss category that's available to us through ARPA. The next handful of slides, I've put on all of the specific requests, which are, again, I don't want to go through those individually. You have those lists in the budget. And I expect we can pull these slides up when specific items are discussed tonight, so that we have these slides for reference. So again, this is a couple of items that we believe are large sort of policy discussions for city council to have are how to handle beach tokens going forward for the beaches in Evanston and the revenue loss associated with that, as well as how to handle our crossing guard operations, which the city pays for almost entirely right now and has a few existing reimbursements, but not from all of the school districts that benefit from that. These are, again, a few other one-time expenses that we're proposing be funded through ARPA revenue loss. We think these are a particularly good category of expenses to fund through this type of funding because, again, they are one-time, as is the ARPA revenue. So we put those forward for that. And then the final two slides I have here are additional staffing requests from our city departments. So I believe there are about 20 positions on these two slides that department directors have put forward as being very critical to improving the operations of their department, responding to areas of significant need, where we've seen understaffing, where we've seen concern from the public about how we're operating and using and providing these services. So you see positions here in administrative services, community development, parks and recreation, and our public works agency. And that wraps up the slides that I have to show here. Again, can bring these up at any point in time if we'd like to reference them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So we're going to begin with the discussion on the operating budget. And want to stress for council that, I think, nearly all or all department directors are available to answer questions as well. And then after we've had that discussion, then we'll move on to SP 2 and discuss the capital improvements program. So are there any questions or comments on item SP 1? We'll begin with Councilmember Fleming, followed by Kelly.
Thank you. Kate, can you go back to, there was a slide in there about the beach revenue and something else? All right. So kind of, can you just explain that one again? I kind of lost it.
Absolutely. So the two items on this slide are, again, items that are not included in the base budget, but we're proposing if council decides to move forward with either of these, they would need to be funded for next year through the revenue loss funding in ARPA. So the first one is free beaches for Evanston residents. And Lawrence Hemingway can better explain that number if need be. But this is the revenue loss that we would see if we continued with doing free beaches all the time for Evanston residents. So this would be an everyday proposal. There's a smaller number that would be associated if we continued the current policy of free beaches three days a week. So again, we put that forward for council discussion about which way to go on that. This would be the number if it were everyday free to Evanston residents. And then the second item on here is our crossing guard operations. The city currently entirely funds crossing guard operations. It's about $620,000 for the total contract to all the school districts. We currently receive reimbursements from District 202 and Caravalle, continually negotiating to receive reimbursements in some amount from District 65. Made some progress on that this year. But we are putting that program forward for council consideration again about whether or not that should be continued in the 2022 budget.
Okay, so I imagine this is not the time maybe to have those conversations, but I would like to see some of the beach numbers flushed out, because I remember before we thought there would be a bigger loss this year with the free weekends, and I think that, that loss was not as big as we projected. And so just kind of wanting to make sure if we're thinking of loss, or like, just kind of what that number is based on. And then for the crossing guards, I know I've talked many times about this, you know, kind of shared expense with 65. So I realize we have to get it in our budget, because now we're still set to pay for it, but I would like an update on kind of where that conversation is, because, you know, this, this year would be one thing for ARPA funds, but it's not attainable for long term. And so if we know we can't kind of afford to keep covering it long term, I'd rather us kind of have that in our budget for this year as much as possible, and use those ARPA funds for some other type of need that our citizens are looking for, you know, really, that's something needed. Plus, I know we've had some, at least in my ward, some issues with crossing guards being in place, right? So before I committed to using ARPA funds for that, I would like to just kind of flush out that contract, particularly the substitution piece, very much more, and then really, you know, pushing the district to see if they can cover, even if they go into it with half of it, or their, their plan is a quarter this year, half next year, something, because we're not always going to have these ARPA funds to pay for both of those items.
Next is Councilmember Kelly, followed by Reed, followed by Braithwaite.
Could you go back to the slide with ARPA expenditures? So it seems like last time that the $5 million expenditures was listed as new personnel in the last presentation?
So $5 million is not entirely new personnel. It's, it's many of the requests that follow them, and $5 million is, was just sort of our, our initial estimate number of what could be put forward in this year's budget. These, these items that sort of come forward are, are included in that. So all of these items, all of these one-time purchases, and then the personnel request totals about $2 million on an annual basis, so.
Okay, and isn't $1 million, you say, on an annual basis?
$2 million on an annual basis.
And that's new personnel?
In the personnel proposal. Yes, this would be the new personnel.
Not positions held vacant?
Correct, yes.
$2 million in new personnel every year going forward? Okay, and can you speak to that a little bit, about the new personnel?
I, I can say that there are directors here for each of these, so if, if we would like to have any of the department directors discuss each of the, each of the personnel that they've put forward, we can do so.
I think I would. I mean, I don't know about anybody else, but I absolutely would like to know more about $2 million worth of new personnel every year.
Sure.
I mean, that's, that's what they're here for.
Okay.
So we can start off with administrative services?
Can we have someone from administrative services please come to speak to the additional personnel that were raised? Sean Cholick, Mike Rivera?
Hi, this is Suzy Hall. I'm management analyst.
Oh, Suzy's on the line.
Can you hear me okay?
Suzy, can you speak up just a little louder?
Sorry. Is this any better?
Yes.
Okay. I'm happy to have the division managers speak as well, but I'm here to answer any questions. Do you want to go through position by position?
Yes, please.
Okay. So first, I know we have the IT digital services specialist. So this is a position that really has been held vacant since March of 2020, when that person left. It would be our technical administrator for the website. Our website was initially created in 2017, and it definitely needs a major upgrade, including many ways to make it more ADA accessible. This position would also work on open data initiatives, you know, building and, and restaurant inspections. This position in the past has been able to create the 311 report, and then EPD dashboard, and as well as would be able to offer more technical training for staff, new programming. And again, with COVID, would be able to offer a lot of digital services for that. So that is that IT position.
I'm sorry. I understood these were all new positions. You, you identified this position as being one that was held vacant?
This is one that was held vacant in the past. It was determined that this should be, this is one that should be sort of brought forward to city council to determine whether, whether it should be added. The additional are, the rest are, are sort of brand-new positions. And Suzy, can you speak to the human resources specialists as well, and then Sean Cholick is here and can cover the facilities positions?
Sure. So for the HR specialist, again, we did have a third HR specialist back in 2018. We've only had two since then. Again, we have 800 employees. The recommended level nationwide for HR is 1.22 HR specialists per 100 people. So technically, we would need three more to get to that national level. So we're just asking for one at this point. We, you know, this is a very, HR is very time-sensitive, needs the time to go through legal requirements. You know, we don't want them to rush and be making any mistakes. So it's just, with the amount of staff we have, this is imperative that we are able to have this person. Right now, we only have two, again, for 800 positions. And the, and the, I would like to clarify just that these figures are including benefits as well. So I know it is the expense, but this isn't what the person would, you know, necessarily be bringing home.
Okay. Good evening, mayor and members of the city council. My name is Sean Cholick. I'm the facilities and fleet manager here. I'm here to talk a little bit about the additional facilities maintenance positions that we're seeking approval for. In the past, we've had a lot more staff in our division. We used to have, you know, a couple of facilities maintenance worker twos, which are, they're not exactly actual tradesmen. The, the facilities maintenance worker three is a tradesman position, but the facilities maintenance worker two position is one that can do a lot of things without, without having the same skill level. They can do painting, basic patching, things like that. So we used to have a number of these FM twos in the past, and what we've noticed is that over time, you know, the workload has continued to increase as we've taken on new facilities into the city, and we had never replaced those positions. Now that Robert Crown has kind of come, I mean, they've been in full effect and operating, but now that we've seen them, as we're coming out of the pandemic a little bit, we've seen the amount of maintenance that's required for this brand-new building. You know, we, we see a need for having the two additional FM three workers. One would be a, a building manager, similar to what we have here at the Civic Center. We have one building engineer that's delegated to just take care of this large building. Robert Crown is a very complex and technical building also, with very extensive systems throughout. And so this position of building engineer would help to oversee some of the vendor services that are going on in that building for HVAC, refrigeration, things like that. The second FM three position would be a general tradesman position that would assist in this very large building, assist the building, building engineer to make sure those systems are up and running. The FM two position is one that we would be looking for to help with some of the basic upkeep of the building. I took a walk with Director Hemingway the other day. We took a look at, you know, some of the doors, all the hockey equipment that beats the doors, the walls, things like that. And so those would be things that the FM two worker could help to keep the building in the pristine condition that it was when it was new. If we, if we were not to hire the FM two, you know, we wouldn't be able to keep up with that workload. And then with the FM threes, those positions are absolutely critical to keep the, the main HVAC and the refrigeration systems going in, in that building. Hopefully, that explains a little more about the FM positions. So if you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Can I ask a question on that? Was, so for Robert Crown, that's three new positions?
So it would be, it would be two new positions that would be delegated to Robert Crown. So the building engineer, the FM worker three, which is a building engineer, would be stationed at that building.
Okay.
So with the second FM worker three, the general tradesman would also be stationed at that building. The FM worker two would be able to spend a lot of time there, but would be able to float throughout to different facilities also.
Okay, and the first one, I, I see, that's the F.
That's F on two.
Thank you.
So we're just gonna, just, housekeeping. We're not taking any votes tonight. I, I think having as sort of naturally flowing a conversation as possible is important, so I'm not gonna, I'm gonna let Councilmember Newsma cut in. You know, on some sort of theoretical sense, Councilmember Kelly, the floor is still yours. We'll go back to you, and we'll go through the departments, but I want to let us have some back and forth on this. So go ahead, Councilmember Newsma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just jumping in on this particular question about Robert Crown maintenance. Would this funding come out of the general fund, or would it come out of the Crown Maintenance Fund, which exists to maintain Robert Crown?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Manager Andersky, and members of the city council, and Clerk Mendoza, Lawrence Hemingway, Director of Parks and Rec. This funding that's been requested is coming from the general fund. The Crown Maintenance Fund is money that has been put aside for when these systems start to need to be replaced, that there's a seed, pot of seed money. So when we have to buy a new, you know, $2 million boiler system, or replace glycol systems, or any of those other systems, that's the Crown Maintenance Fund. So these positions have requested right now are coming from the general fund. Thank you.
And go ahead, Councilmember Braithwaite. Lawrence, if you'd just stay up here.
Quick, quick, just a quick question on subject. So I'm a little confused. I'm not sure how to ask this question, so I'll do my best. The old Crown had an operating fund, right? And so in my, in my thinking here, the old Robert Crown, you know, was extremely expensive in terms of maintenance, just because of the age of the building. And so now I'm looking at this, and I'm asking myself the question, these positions that you have listed here, were these positions that all of a sudden became vacant when the old Robert Crown was knocked down, and then all of a sudden, where did they go? And so here we are, and it, I guess it seems expensive, and excuse my ignorance, I'm of the thought that it probably should take less money to maintain a new building versus what I'm seeing here. And if that's something you can help me to get my head around, I'd appreciate it. Thank you, Director.
Thank you, Councilmember Braithwaite. So the first point you made was about the old Crown having a fund. No, it did not have any type of maintenance fund, and your building ended up in a kind of disrepair that caused us to build the new one. So no fund was there. Trying to do things differently this time?
Right.
That's why you had a current Crown maintenance fund.
I guess speak more specifically to the number of employees that we see dedicated to Crown.
Well, yeah. This, this comes, as we have operated this facility over the last 18 months, what we have come to realize is that we don't have enough bodies. This building is a seven-day-a-week, 364-day open building, 5:45 a.m. to midnight. The ice system and the technical, what we've learned, you know, the technical expertise that is needed. We need a specific tradesperson throughout the day, as well as on weekends. We are currently operating without that, just so that you understand. We've had a few, now, we have an on-call preventative maintenance contract. The last call we had to make when we had an emergency, it took them over three hours to get to us, right? There's been a few occasions and where the alarms have gone off, we've had to evacuate the facility, et cetera. At, and most of the times, those alarms are when we don't have anybody there on staff. And so as, you know, the operator of the facility, I work closely with facilities in trying to, you know, what is it that we need? There are things Sean didn't mention. As the building has settled now, it's been open a little over 18 months to construction, some of the settling issues that we're having, he talked about the paint from the hockey bags. We got cracks and seals throughout the floors, throughout the walls, that need a certain level of technical expertise that I believe through our conversations that general tradesmen could focus on. The staff in my department, we opened, you know, this building's been open since February of '20. March, the pandemic hit, and when we still open back up to the public, all of my custodial-type staff has been dealing with cleaning, keeping the building clean, and trying to maintain the ice in terms of ice cuts and service for the ice use, flip rooms for setups, et cetera. This will allow for the city to have technical expertise on a more consistent basis. And, you know, none of, we thought, we went into this trying to project our best, you know, using all our best knowledge, best practice, looking at other communities of how they operate it. But, you know, this just is 130,000-square-foot monster that we need more technical expertise. And so we've had the opportunity to ask, we collaborated, and this will be FM staff, this is facility maintenance staff, this isn't Parks and Rec staff. This will be facility maintenance, because if it is slow, one of the things or advantages here, Sean could, if he need to, use these extra bodies in other locations as well. So they're housed at Crown, stationed at Crown, with the ability to move forward. So I hope I addressed your question.
I did want to add one other thing, too. We got to keep in mind that this new Crown building is pretty much twice the size of the old Crown. So there's a lot more equipment, a lot more footprint. This is also a two-level building, where the old one was a single level. So, you know, you've got additional things that, that you deal with there. Lawrence had pointed out the cracks and, and things like that. But, you know, the other thing with this building is there is a lot of glass involved in this building. And, you know, so where the other one was mostly masonry, it's going to stand up a little longer, a little sturdier. You know, these windows do, do present some challenges also. So I just wanted to throw that out there also for you to, to think about.
Thanks for bringing up the glass. We've had a couple glass shatter that we had to replace, just as the building settled. So they're designed in a way that it, when I say shatter, you know, just crack throughout, spider crack, but we've had to replace a couple, and it was based on settling of the building. So there's just, it's, it's, we're learning every day. We've learned a lot over the 18 months operating it, and we've just come to the point where we need more bodies to maintain this very technical facility.
Are those settling issues not covered by the warranty with the builder? We spent an awful lot of money.
Most of the system warranties are one-year. We're beyond that at this point. Would you agree, Mar?
We are beyond a one-year warranty.
All right, so, yeah. Thank you.
Okay, so just to sort of unwind where we are structurally, Councilmember Kelly asked about these additional requested positions, and A is the first letter of the alphabet. I'm here to give you the important facts. And so we started with administrative services, and that's what we've, that's where we've gotten to so far. So would you like us to continue going through?
Yeah, I would. I think these are really important expenses that will go on for a very long time. This isn't, so yes, personnel, I think, are the most important expenses.
Great. So go ahead, Ms. Niden with community development.
Good eve, good evening, Johanna Niden, community development, here for the letter C. So the first two items, permit services representative, two, two FTEs, and one permit desk supervisor. I think each and every one of you sends me a weekly email about a permit that is stuck, or is slow, or there's a problem with. We are understaffed at the permit desk. This happens every summer. This year was particularly bad because we did not have permit desk staff. We had to bring in people who were cross-trained on permit desk operations to staff our permit desk. We just hired somebody. They've been training for the past few weeks. We're still trying to find one more person, but that will still not be enough. I think there, on page 18 to 20, there's a memo highlighting how much time each permit takes, different types of permits, different processes that permit staff, desk staff have to do. If you calculate all that up, add all the time, based on the volume of permits we have, we just don't have, based on the number of permits we get, we don't have enough time in the year, number of minutes, hours, working days, to process all the permits. And that also assumes a even in income of, incoming of the permits. They come, they peak around, they start peaking around May, June. July, August, we get a lot. And then by now, it kind of flattens out. But in our permit desk operations right now, we're still in August, August, September, because of the lag that we've had. So those, those three new positions would help add more staff. People can't really take vacations when you work at the permit desk. We let people take vacations, but it, you can't have multiple people taking vacations at the same time, because our operations grind to a halt. They can't be sick at the same time. So we have a lot of challenges that make it hard to run operationally. Somebody leaves, and we have to train somebody new. Often, we're asking other staff, who are training their colleagues, to do something. It's, we don't have a consistent approach to our training. It's, it's, okay, that person does a good job, you show them how to do it. So it's, it's a harder thing to do. And you also then have our building and inspection services manager spending more time doing training and oversight of very small and minor permit issues when there's other bigger, bigger things, such as enforcement, visiting different parts of, different building sites. That person is, ends up spending a lot of time on those activities. Another thing I should point out about the permit desk is we've kept permit revenues pretty flat over the past few years. I think if we add more people, we will be able to process more permits, because it'll be easier to process permits, and more people will apply for permits, because it's an easier process. Anecdotally, I hear from contractors and from architects that say they are hearing that people are not going in for a permit, because it's so difficult in Evanston. And of course, they then report that they would never say that to a client or customer. But we know that that's happening, because we're getting more complaints about construction without, without permit. So we then send our inspectors out to go visit that, which takes time out of their scheduled work, which further delays somebody getting to the next step of their project, because we have inspectors who have to go visit for stop-work orders. And then, and then we're in a position where we're further grinding to a halt. So if we have a better intake, a better customer experience, we're gonna get better results in terms of bringing in new revenue. So I would feel comfortable then in a year saying we will have more revenue based on this. I mean, we generally get over our permit revenue, but I've been uncomfortable saying we're gonna get more than our permit revenue, given the capacity for staff to, to process.
Councilmember, when did you want to speak, ask about this, Director?
Actually, I think Director Nyden answered my question, which was, do any of these positions, and I actually like that to apply to all of the new positions. Are there any of the new positions that we're gonna be discussing that have a potential for adding revenue? And I think what you're saying is saying, yes, it does. And I would acknowledge your point, that I do believe residents have alluded to me that they have bypassed the process occasionally. And it's alarming, but they say, well, we can't wait any longer. We're just gonna go forward. So, but, so I think you're right, that if it's a, if we return to a quicker process, that people will be happy to go through it. Not, if not happy, but they're ready to go through it.
I think also on this topic, Councilmember Braithwaite, followed by Newsma.
So I agree, nothing new to add. I think out of, a lot of our services is critical, because it's tied to revenue. And so I don't have, I guess it's a challenge. And maybe if you look at all the backlog of permits that haven't been addressed, and if there's a way to assess the fee. I don't want you to put too much work into it, because I'm, I'm invested. But I do think that there should be a way to try to quantify, like adding $634,000, like what are we gonna get for that? Outside of just the customer service, right? So if that means more revenue coming in, which you already said, again, I'll ask, can we just look at the backlog of permits as maybe one indicator? And then the other piece, which I also think is critical, is the work being done without approvals. I mean, there's no way to really quantify that. But I would hope, you know, from a common sense perspective, if people are doing work without proper permits and paying attention to the regulations, then we open up ourselves to a lot of problems later on. So, thank you.
If you, if you looked at, it was 138, 164, 100, I'm sorry, that wasn't correct. 218 for last year, for, for work without, if you assigned a, let's say each one of those was a thousand dollars of a permit, I mean, that's average. Some of these permits are very, multiple thousands of dollars. That's a lot of, that's a lot of money that's recovered right there. So I think, I think you would, you know, I can, we can work to make some assumptions. I mean, the other thing to think about is if these extreme storms that we get, as climate change continues to be a reality, the hailstorm of, of 2020 was an intense disaster for roofs in Evanston. And that resulted in a lot of permits, and a lot of permitted activity that, a lot of activity that was not permitted, that we went in and were able to capture as well. So those, those kind of events, being able to respond to them quickly, because they really are catastrophic, because people can't, can't live in their homes. We had people who were begging, I can't live in my home, because the roof is so damaged at least. So, so those are, you know, they're, we can, we can quantify maybe some of those catastrophic events, because unfortunately, we know that they will continue to happen.
And this is more so for the benefit, I mean, I think back here, we get it, because we get the complaints every single day, emails, phone calls, and contractors. But just for someone in the public to be able to see something graphic that they can hold on to is, is the basis of my challenge, not disagreeing with whether or not we need it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. So in addition to this increased personnel expense, you're also proposing spending some money on some software. And they would have to go together, really, to make the most, to make the most improvements.
I mean, I, we're, what we, our inside joke in the office is, what we are operating on is like if you still had the iPhone 2, and you'd never done any updates. And we've learned to make phone calls with other people's phones. We've, we're using spreadsheets. I mean, we've, we've used all the tools that are at our disposal to try to make this work. But we are not running with the best system. And we often blame the system, but we've never invested in it. So for, I think we've had it for 15 years. We've never invested in it. We've never made many improvements to the workflow. Things that should be captured in there are not necessarily captured in there. It, in terms of boxes to check, those are, those are things that are, you know, are organizational failure, but we have not made that. I think it was sold at the time, this will solve all your problems. But the approach wasn't that we needed to make investments.
Johanna, let me jump into it. And there's, understand that there's less accountability when you have a software system that doesn't track where the permit process goes. So right now, we, you know, the permits go to an inbox, and then someone has to print off that paper, and they start working on it, and then it goes to the next person. The system is just archaic. And with the upgrade, the one-time upgrade of the software system, there would then be more accountability, not just department-wide, but city-wide, because Public Works could then see where a permit lies in community development.
So upgrading to this new software would address a concern that I've heard from contractors that say, oh, of course, I always get a permit, but it takes forever, and there are so many steps in the process. And there, you know, Evanston requires so many different permits compared to other communities.
All, all of that, and, and some. Like, we have issues with property maintenance. In the same department, don't necessarily talk to each other. The software doesn't talk to each other. So if somebody has a violation from a property standards perspective, we can't look to then see if they have an open permit on something. It's, I mean, we can look this stuff up, but it adds, adds extra time and process. Or even, do they have outstanding fines on something else? Do I want to issue a permit for somebody who still has outstanding fees in other parts of the city? Those are, that's not gonna be, be something we can solve immediately, but those are the kinds of things that we can better integrate with other systems.
If we upgrade the software, do we need that many additional people to run the system?
People in Evanston still want people to talk to. And that has become, if I was standing here last year, I might have said that, but it has been more pronounced than ever. People want to talk to people. They want to have a person help them, because a lot of the people who are applying for permits are people who have no building experience. So they need a little bit of technical assistance. The contractors may have the challenge, it may take them some extra time. But it's people like all of us in this room who are applying for something, because their contractor said, oh, it's not that hard, you can go get it. And so those individuals need a lot of handholding, a lot of technical assistance. And people want to talk to a person. The first thing I hear when I, I am now, as the Community Development Director, returning phone calls of people who are upset that they don't have a permit. And the first thing they say, oh, my gosh, I'm so happy to be able to talk to a person. We love computers, we love technology, but they still want a person in Evanston.
Yep. I'm glad you mentioned last year, because this was in the budget document for last year. The last year's budget document, which was for this calendar year, there was, you know, initiative to improve procedures and processing for building permits. So have we done what we were supposed to according to last year's budget discussion?
Some of it has been, so there's an online portal that we were able to turn on.
Okay.
That allows for some of the quick, we call them express permits. So new water service, some roof permit. There's some very simple, straightforward permits that we've been able to turn on that module for. We've scanned a lot of our documents. So things that we might have otherwise had to go in a file cabinet on the third floor, we can now find within literally seconds. So those, those are things that we have done. We've asked for this, this money in previous budgets, and it's been smaller amounts for, I think it was last year was 150, or maybe 160,000. So those, we've had smaller bites, you know, the approach was, let's do small, small, small. I think we've, we're running out of time in terms of catching up to what people are willing to tolerate. And I think moving to this remote virtual experience has really amplified the need for, for some of this digital catch-up.
Good, thank you.
And I just want to quickly follow up on, on the desire of people to speak to a person. What is the non-English language capacity of employees at the permit desk? And what's the need? And what languages is the need most acute?
Well, we use, and it's completely escaping me right now, the, the software, the program where you can call somebody, and they can provide translation services if needed. But generally, we do have, we have somebody who can speak Spanish at the permit desk. And then we have somebody who can speak, I'm, I don't want to say what languages. She does speak other languages that have been useful. But we generally have used the city translation services if we need somebody.
Thanks. Councilmember Kelly?
Yes, so in terms of being able to provide sort of accountability to our residents and our constituents, can we see in terms of efficiency over the years? Could you provide a list of the number of permits, and the cost that it's been to run it over the years, and how it's increased, if that's the case? And by how much? And in order to better be able to justify this? And also, a comment regarding, you mentioned handholding. I've heard, and this is what I've heard a number of times now, that people are saying that inspections, they kind of laugh at it. They say they're virtual. And of course, they don't mind, because they say it's much easier to pass an inspection, but they're kind of laughing, like, why are they still doing it this way? And I, can you, so, so I've heard this a lot. And people say, I don't mind, like, they're probably gonna mind that I'm bringing this up tonight.
So we've restored most of our inspections to in-person. So re-inspections, where the inspector may have already been out to the site to see it. The example I give is, you do, and upgrade your electric panel, you missed labeling something, the inspector says, just send me a picture of the labels. Once, you know, I've seen the work, I've seen the circuits, I'm good, just send me a picture. So it saves to going back out for the re-inspection. But all, almost all of our inspections now are in-person again. So that, that has been a change from this past spring, once vaccines were available.
Okay, but they're still continuing now? Because just recently, someone had a home inspection, they said it was virtual, and...
We can talk offline. That should have been, depending on the type, it should have been. Most inspections are in-person, but... If there's more staff, I can keep going.
What's that?
We have more staff on there. I can keep going, there's no more questions about permit staff. Okay, customer service representative for property standards. We've gotten more property maintenance inspection, property standards complaints. We'd like to have our inspectors in the field more. So having, but inspectors now, for many years, have come back into the office to process paperwork, prepare notices of violations, or even tickets. We'd like to have inspectors in the field more. So this position would help with the paperwork for those positions to better relay what, what is happening, and better utilize our inspection staff. We also continue to see a rise, we'll see what the spring market holds. But real estate transfer tax is a big piece of this position in terms of checking various databases to make sure there's no outstanding liens, or loans, or any other kind of debt owed to the city. So people, that's another money-generating opportunity, being able to process those in a timely manner. So sales do go through is a key piece of that. And the last two are the planning and zoning manager and the comprehensive plan coordinator. These are two positions proposed to be in the planning and zoning division. I currently serve as the planning and zoning division manager, in addition to the community development director. All the planning and zoning staff report to me. This position was reclassified previously in last year's budget to save money, and also to hopefully focus on the comprehensive plan. But we staffed that position with a planner position this past spring to accommodate permit activity. So we're asking for two of these positions. The planning and zoning manager would also be able to support permit activity. There's complicated zoning matters. We are an older community. We have challenging zoning matters related to where things can go, how they can be positioned. Having more, more people that can help with those, those challenging issues would, would help immensely. And then there's been a lot of talk about comprehensive planning. And I've been talking about it, you all have been talking about it, bringing in staff that could really help move that forward and accompany the request for implementation of this plan.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yeah, so for that customer service rep for property standards, would that person also then take phone calls? Because right now, along with permitting, I get a lot of phone calls about whatever thing people were fined about or noticed about. And they call 311, and they go to a voicemail somewhere.
Right, and that, that position right now is returning those 311s and those voicemails that people are leaving. So this would be another person that could return those calls and answer the phone.
Okay, and then the comprehensive plan, I think you're right, we've talked about it. I don't know that we've made a commitment to it, so I guess my concern with that position is, just because we have a person doesn't mean that this council's gonna make a commitment to it. Or if there's a comprehensive plan, that we're gonna implement it. So I'd be a little hesitant on hiring someone just to do one thing that we have not necessarily committed to. And then my other question is for interim manager Kelly, because I thank you, for all of these. And I know we usually do this, I guess maybe later. It would be good to have some kind of written documentation, just even, you know, a couple paragraphs about the positions, because our citizens will want to know.
There should be memos and...
Are there memos?
For each position, and then we, I ask each director to justify it with data where possible.
Got it, okay, so then I didn't see that. But then my other question for that was... Oh, shoot, I missed my question. Oh, well, then I'll ask you later, because maybe it's in the memo that I didn't see. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Oh, just, hold on one second, Ms. Nyden, Councilmember Kelly?
Yes, so with regard to those last two positions, I understand it would, those would help. But what would be the problem without, without those last two positions? I mean, what?
Well, right now, the planning and zoning manager is me. So when I'm not here, I have one person that can do the job, which is Sarah Flax. So I have, you know, our bench is not too deep in community development in terms of senior leadership, succession planning, all those things. In terms of decisions that a manager would make, questions about workflow, I have eight different people who come to me and ask me questions about things that are probably more manager-level decisions. I'm happy to make them. I appreciate to being supportive of the staff. But we are, we are adding a middle manager role to the community, the director role. So there's things that I just can't, can't always provide for the staff. So if they're waiting for something, a decision on a zoning, a project, or I want to review this letter, I can't always review it in a timely manner. You know, maybe if they send it to me in the morning, I might not get it until later in the afternoon, or even the next morning. So there's just things like that, that you add to my workflow, you, you, you slow, it creates a bit of a logjam. I wish I could do more with less kind of thing. But, you know, we accommodated this last year because of the pandemic, to reduce a manager, to reduce the flow there. We're, we're in a position where we need that manager. Because if somebody has, you have a resident or a business that is concerned about something, they're, with the way a zoning planner has maybe made a decision, their next step is me. And so, you know, there's, there's just a limited amount of time that, and we can't, we can't always be as responsive as we want, because there's just not enough people.
Thank you.
Sorry, that, that, if you could come back, that lit everybody up.
My question is not for Director Knight, no.
Great, and Eleanor, is yours?
Well, I was just going to follow up about the comprehensive plan coordinator, because also, in our proposed budget document, we've got $500,000 of ARPA revenue loss funding for the comprehensive and strategic plan consultant fees. So, so as part of the whole, I'm envisioning as part of our adopting the budget, that that's how we're giving our go-ahead to actually do the comprehensive plan and the strategic plan.
Correct, and, Debbie, oh, I'm sorry, so we, we put a line item in for the consultant, but this goes back to the age-old problem that once there's a plan, who's going to execute the plan? So this would contemplate that we would have a plan, and then there would be someone spearheading that plan.
So a bunch of follow-ups, I think council member, okay, the entire council, I think Councilmember Burns has a separate item.
Yeah, I'll hold until everybody's, yeah.
So I think on this, we have council members, Nusma, Braithwaite, and Kelly.
If we're talking about comprehensive plan, I would like to suggest we include our CARP implementation and environmental justice implementation as part of that comprehensive plan. I can hold my comments until we address CARP and sustainability in a larger context.
And just for the record, that is, the plan is to fold CARP into that planning as well, yes.
Councilwoman Braithwaite?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question was a previous, I think a previous slide, when it relates to the free beaches, so I can wait until the appropriate time.
Okay, yeah, let's, let's hold those until the end of the, the sort of tour of the departments. Councilmember Kelly?
So I just feel like, and I do want to continue with this, I think it's really important, because these are huge expenses that don't end after the ARPA money runs out, so I think it's really important that we understand these. But I also feel that instead of like evaluating every position going forward, it would be nice, I don't know if we can set some sort of standards on how we evaluate staff, staffing positions?
Yes, I can address that, too. One of the things I've noticed in the last year and a half is that it appears that continually this organization has had positions cut for budgetary purposes, and the work has been distributed among staff. I'm finding that there's less efficiency that way now. There's more room for more mistakes, there's more room for burnout, there's more room when people leave, we have a critical time replacing those positions because of the amount of responsibilities that one person was doing. So that's one part of it. The other part of it is, just because council were to theoretically grant us these positions in the budget, does not mean we will be able to fill all of them next year. So there would be a cost savings. If we don't fill the positions, sometimes it takes months to post and fill and get the right candidate in. So theoretically, these positions can stay vacant for a while, or we can fill some of the positions and see how the operations are going. So for instance, we could, you know, fill, start with one permit service representative, and see if that's increasing revenue and decreasing the workload such that they're able to make do with one representative before we fill it with a second full-time position. So I think one of the critical things in government management is always making sure that the workload is distributed, but also that people are doing what they can do with the time that they're here. And so where there's inefficiencies, you look at that and redistribute workloads, and you cross-train. That's another big part of what we've been trying to do here, is cross-train, but if I'm honest, I'm running out of individuals to cross-train with. So we've done this even in the city manager's office, where we ask people to cross-train. So cross-training and looking at metrics, and I think the permit desk is one really good example, where we can actually see how this is working, because are we increasing revenue with more bodies? And if not, then that would be a really clear indicator that something else is wrong.
Councilmember Fleming?
I remember my question, so now looking at the budget memos, which, we're not in the packet, but are on the budget page, just for clarification for people who are watching. Can we have a memo another time about hiring? Because I feel like, and I don't have the best memory, but I feel like some departments have been flat, and some departments have definitely been hiring, especially during the pandemic. And so it'd be good to see, given all the gaps we have in staffing, what departments have still been, you know, hiring people, or, you know, kind of flat, whereas other departments have been losing a lot of people? Because I want to make sure that, again, as we're, as we're bringing people on, there's a lot of different things we consider, and not just where the revenue can come in, because I think I hear as much about people feeling like we're charging more money for things, but people also feel like the service level has declined so much. And that's not just at the permit desk where we're bringing in money, that's in parks and other places. So I want to make sure that we're allocating the staff resources we have, not just where we can bring in some revenue, but also where people are having that touch with our community and feeling like we've lost that piece.
Councilwoman Braithwaite?
Just to follow up with that, you know, when you've done this for a number of years, we've seen really, really good staff, and we also know what things don't look well in terms of customer service. So my encouragement for new members, because I'll continue to do this, is please reach out to the directors. So I would agree with you 100%, Councilmember Fleming, just looking at the information, but then also take advantage of our experts who are in the room, to talk to them and understand, you know, the impact to their department. Not only have we lost really good staff over the years, and I think our interim city manager did an excellent job, but our staff is tired. And, and the result of the lack of service that we've seen in the last couple of years due to the pandemic, people are leaving for whatever their reasons are, many of our staff are overworked, and there's really no human way to understand that unless you take the time to have the conversation. So I'm going to encourage, as a council, that we reach out, and then also I speak to the directors. I know how challenging it is, your day-to-day jobs, plus your managing your families and other stuff, just because I talk to you. So I hope that throughout this budget season, that, you know, as you're listening to these questions, to please reach out to us and, and help us to understand the information that we can't necessarily glean from just reading a document. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks. Councilmember Burns, do you want to jump in now, or wait till we go through the departments?
It's, it's about a new position, so I'll jump in now. So I hear a lot about permits, the permit process, I hear a lot about property standards, and there's a feeling as though that we don't have enough inspectors for property standards. So also would like to, if Director Knight, you could speak to that issue. This is something that I, I made a property standards referral to comprehensively go over all of this, that unfortunately, you know, we haven't made it to a committee yet, but I would love to have a more, you know, robust conversation about it, but I hear about that all the time in the ward. And then the last question, and I've talked to staff about this, is about a new position to help out with special boat pickups. Again, this is an issue on all sides of the ward, it's an issue, it's, it's an issue for people who, who correctly make special boat pickup requests from the city. Those who don't, we need to go out and make the pickup and charge the homeowner, you know, per metric, whatever, however that calculation works, so we need additional staff for that. But also, fly dumping is a huge issue in the fifth ward, and it also would allow us to get out to those sites quickly, in the alleys, you know, people are bold, they'll, I've seen, saw something the other day that was right on the parkway, and we need to be able to respond to those, those requests quicker than I think we're able to now. So if we could, I guess the first question is for you, and then maybe Director Stoneback can, can address the second question.
So we are going to reclassify a current employee, our sign inspector and graffiti removal specialist, to a property maintenance inspector. So that's in the budget to add another inspector. And part of, to your point, that particular inspector would likely be tasked with mostly exterior, because we get a lot of fly dumping, exterior complaints, and that particular employee would need very little training to know where things are, and continue with some of the sign, the sign code violations, but also deal with, deal with the issues of fly dumping, and, and just general exterior complaints that lead to other complaints like rats and overflowing garbage. So there's sort of that nexus between health, public works, and community development for complaints. So that's, we do hear you on that, so we were going to reclassify, and then graffiti removal would now be handled by public works. They would, they would take that on, because right now, we have one person in community development who handles graffiti removal, and when he's out, we often send those requests to public works or Parks and Rec, depending on what the type or the location is. So it just makes sense to have that in one department versus multiple departments.
And we think reclassifying that position, or changing that position around, is enough, is enough to address some of the concerns we're hearing?
You will get another property maintenance inspector out of that.
All right, I think, thank you.
And Councilmember Kelly?
I was just going back to some of the positions up here. So these are nice starting salaries, not that I don't think probably everybody who do any of those jobs isn't worth much more than that, but, so I'm just curious what the like, who would address this, they're like 100,000, again?
That's with benefits.
But, I'm sorry?
That was with benefits, that's not the strategy.
That's with benefits.
Yep, all the numbers shown here are, would be the full cost, and you can generally assume about 30% of a full cost is benefits.
So salaries would be like 70, you want to say? 70 for those, okay.
Yeah.
And so, and just, the crown is, there's no warranty on anything? Like, Clark, can you, I mean, not even the glass? It seems like the glass would have a warranty when you're talking about.
That's not the issue. Cracked glass. Different systems have different warranties, so I would really need to go look and see specifically what.
So there are some warranties, and I would think on the glass, the glass should be warranted.
It depends, it really does depend on what caused the problem as well. So I need, I would need to go back and specifically sort through that.
Okay.
We, we have acting director Edgar Kano.
Good evening, members of the council, Mayor Biss, City Manager Ganderski, Clerk Mendoza, Edgar Kano, acting director of Public Works Agency. Yes, Mr. Councilmember Burns, as you mentioned, we are definitely short in our R E M department, recycling environment, maintenance department. We would love additional personnel in order to collect those special pickups. We are falling behind on special pickups and fly dumps, which have been increasing throughout the city. In order to do that, we do believe that we would need two additional staff members and an additional vehicle in order to appropriately traverse the city to make sure to pick that up. It's on our mind, it's something that we want to do. Again, we're just lacking the resources in order to do it right now.
I don't know if the next step is to get a memo on that, just that we can have, that all the council members can have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so let's move forward through the alphabet. To Parks and Recreation.
Okay, so the first position is the request for a recreation manager. And currently, so that you all understand how we're structured, I have three buildings currently that hasn't, have no manager. I have four buildings that do. Those buildings are Levy, Robert Crown, Fleawood, Jordan, and, I'm not forgetting, Levy, Robert Crown, no, 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 no. Ecology, thank you. And as you can see, we have three buildings that don't have a manager, and how we've been operating, and that's just due to over the last several years, as we've had to reduce staff. Those three facilities just end up reporting to the assistant director position or myself. And so the first position you see there is a recreation manager to manage those three buildings. Noise is operated as a leasing facility, as all you know, but there are also requirements with the tenant association in terms of managing their community service hours, right? We have nobody, we do it, being like out of my office, but there isn't, you know, we need someone to hold our tenants accountable on a more consistent basis in terms of that, in terms of managing noise. As far as Chandler Newburger Center, the management of Chandler has bounced around over my last five and a half years here. It will go to a manager with another building, then we pull it out, we'll send it, you know, or someone leaves or retire. When I first got here, Chandler had its own manager, and the position was cut. And so because of that, we've been moving it back and forth to the manager with the skill set who can take on more ability. So this is a great example of doing more with less. You had a manager of a building, that person retires, we're now cut the position, and so the responsibilities fall on someone who's left, who has the, the talent to do so. And, you know, what you end up with, and what you have been over the last four years, is, you know, someone at the director or assistant director level scheduling custodians to work, someone call in. We are at the very grassroots level of just trying to provide the service. And so we would need a manager. This position would also pick up some of those responsibilities, as well as managing the future usage of Gibbs Morrison. Right now, Gibbs is just primarily a rental spot when we can find custodians to work. And so if we're going to, if the decision for us is to move forward with re-engaging, reintroducing Gibbs as a more active facility, this also could fall under that position. So that's the first manager. The second is a lakefront manager. For many, many years, the lakefront had its own manager, it had a lakefront coordinator, and then it also had an assistant director that all of the lakefront operations reported to. When I arrived, we, we only had an assistant director. When I got here, there was two assistant directors, one of them was eliminated. And so what happened is, the management of the lakefront, again, falls to who is left. And so we had talented staff who could take on the responsibilities. But besides the investigation, we need someone focused on the lakefront year-round, whether it's training, prepping training, updating our lakefront operational manuals, everything associated with it. The closeout aspects right now that we're dealing with, and trying to get our boaters and those who store their non-motorized boats with us during this time of year, trying to get all of that finalized during this time of year, as well as prepping every single year, the opening and management of the lakefront. This position, up until the early 2010s, was a regular position in the budget, it was eliminated, got moved to an assistant director, that position got eliminated, and we are where we are today. Custodian one for multiple buildings, it's just like, right now, I am, I am juggling bodies from building to building. I have a person currently at Levy, who's, who's trying to keep the building clean at Levy, and run over to the Ecology Center. It's just not an efficient way, but it's all we have. We don't have enough bodies. And we're asking for a full-time custodian to help us keep both facilities optimally clean. We have reached a point in our department where our custodians and our facility supervisors are the ones who kind of deal with rentals when buildings are rented, or an evening ward meeting, or things of that nature. We, we obviously accommodate the ward meetings, but we have stopped taking rentals, because I don't have enough bodies or people to come in and work on a Saturday, Sundays, to manage these rentals. We need more people, and, because we have just continued to cut. And so it's not just been at the management level over the years, we've also equally cut at our custodial level, and it has reached a breaking point for us. And so we, you know, you talked earlier, Councilmember Kelly, about revenues with my colleague, we are not taking any rentals, and now we're losing revenue, because we don't have bodies to come in. Whether it's at Levy, whether it's at Chandler, it doesn't matter where, that's across the board. So these additional custodial positions will assist us to, one, maintain the facilities with the COVID standards that are currently in place, and, two, put us in a position to accommodate some of the weekend activities. I mean, the one thing about our department is, we're seven days a week, and a lot of the members in the community come use us for, you know, their personal activities, whether it's a baby shower, birthday party, et cetera. We are just in dire needs of additional staff to continue to accommodate that. And without the staff, we won't be able to continue to accept those rentals. And then, and so that kind of goes to the part-time custodians at Crown as well. We talked a little bit about Crown, but Crown just, we need more. We don't have enough, we did our best projections, we don't have enough. That building's, again, 5:45 a.m. to 12:00 midnight, every single day. And, and I'll tell you, let me talk a little bit about the other position there, the last one is a Zamboni driver. Our Zamboni process is very easy to get on the Zamboni machine, drive and do an ice cut. Probably a good Zamboni driver would do that in an eight to 10-minute timeframe. What people don't see, then it takes 20 minutes in the back of the house to dump the tanks, refill the water that goes in there, and the water spigot that we have to fill the Zamboni machines, very slow. It just takes time. So it would take 30 minutes or so approximately to do one ice cut. one ice cut. Then I got to go to the second sheet, we do the actual ice cut, and by the time you come back, an empty machine and do that, it is taking another 30 minutes. So if we got just somebody who focused on Zamboni driving, you know, to some degree, again, it frees up more custodial staff to meet the COVID cleaning standards, to keep the building addressed in terms of serving, especially in the evenings, getting the buildings flipped over, one activity to another. And so we really believe these would be the positions to help us be a little more efficient operationally and also meet the needs of those positions that's been cut over the years.
Councilmember Kelly, followed by Fleming.
So this year, we also didn't run the aquatics camp due to COVID, right? That wasn't a staffing issue, so.
We didn't run aquatics camp because when we started the beach season, the beach at Greenwood was extreme, it was minimal. As the season, summer, went on, the water receded some, and we got more of the beach. We opened that beach up, I want to say, second week of July, and made it more, you know, so we had that beach. But the aquatics camp runs out of Greenwood Beach. That's the location we need to run aquatics camp. And right now, we have Greenwood Beach to operate. So as long as we have a beach to operate it, we could do it.
When did it stop? I mean, I know when my kids went, it was always Dempster Street Beach.
Dempster and Greenwood are attached.
Right.
And the Greenwood space, we've our non-motorized rentals have grown tremendously. We got so many rentals now on Dempster, we need to focus the Green, the Aquatics Camp area and the Greenwood space so that you're not mixing the two. And that's the reason why we didn't open it, because, again, there just wasn't enough sand to operate at the beginning of the season.
But there was no rentals, so.
When I say rentals, I'm talking about the rental, our boat rentals. We we did almost 400, over 400 boat slip, I mean boat rentals.
Oh, boat slips, I'm sorry. I apologize. But the other rentals was can't were canceled.
Yeah, not, yeah.
Those were, those were.
I'm talking about the, I'm sorry. When I used that term rental, I was talking about the non-motorized boat slips.
Councilmember Fleming.
So, not a skater, I I need some clarification on the Zamboni.
Sure.
So did you have the jobs listed together? So can you clarify, so two part-time custodians or two part-time custodians and one part-time Zamboni driver?
Yeah, it's 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 for Robert Crown specifically, there are, there's 1.5 FTEs and custodians and another 0.75 Zamboni driver. So three positions that are each 0.75 FTEs.
Okay, so 0.75 is 30 hours?
Yep, exactly.
All right. So and then Zamboni is 30 minutes per slip of ice?
Say it, woman, say it again.
The Zamboni, you said it's about 30 minutes to do the whole ice?
Whole process.
Process, right.
Cut the ice 10 minutes, but you got another 20 minutes behind the house.
Right, with the slow water and all that.
That's correct.
But I'm I'm trying to, you know, understand. So for 30 minutes per sheet of ice, we have two and a half sheets of ice there?
Two sheets.
Two, okay, two, so even less. How many times are we doing the Zamboni that somebody's working 30 hours a week? Or are they doing other stuff?
Zamboni, we're doing, we're cutting that ice every hour. So once the one activity finishes, you go in and you recut the ice before the next activity come on. And so literally, what you have is a position who's basically dealing with ice cuts, who can't go clean bathrooms, or can't go clean the spill when an emergency happens, because they're concentrated on the ice cuts.
And so these people, so that I'm really clear, the Zamboni driver is also a custodian or he's just a Zamboni driver?
No, I'm I'm asking for a brand-new position.
That's just a Zamboni driver.
Of just a Zamboni driver.
Okay.
To free up the existing positions who can do multiple things.
Right. So then my question is, for a 30-minute cut of an ice, and you're going back and forth between the two sheets of ice, I'm assuming, that is 30 hours a week, even though each cut of ice is 30 minutes?
Yeah, when you, that is 30 hours a week, more. I mean, the building's open, you know, way more than that, but I'm asking for this as a minimum to help us during those peak hours, specifically in the evening. So and when I have more more people in the building, so that we got somebody who can focus on ice cuts after each hour, but I also now have freed up the staff, because the staff that's currently doing it are also the ones who got to go do these other things.
Okay, so then my other question is, is there some kind of special trial skill training that goes into being a Zamboni driver, or is it just, are we training people to do this? Like, is this?
Yeah, there are, you know, so like, you know, obviously, there are experienced people, but yes, there are folks who you can probably be trained to run a Zamboni, not probably, you can be trained to run a Zamboni. We have, our current structure of facility workers there, all have been trained. They didn't all walk in the door with Zamboni experience. So yes, this is a position where someone could be trained to do.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Reed, followed by Burns.
Yes, thank you, Director. So for the Zamboni driver, picking up on where Councilmember Fleming was, I'm sorry, so the 83,000 number, is that for the full 2.25 full-time equivalent? Or is that per person?
No, that is the full, that's the equ, that's all three of those positions.
Altogether.
3.75, yeah, those are part-time positions. The benefit number is not as high, but yes, that's all three positions combined.
Eighty, okay, okay. So that's a better number than I expected. So the hourly pay for someone who does the Zamboni work is?
I mean, we've looked, so when I look at other rinks, you're talking around $15 an hour.
Okay.
Somewhere in that range.
Yeah, and so, and then, I'm sorry, was I hearing that it takes about 30 minutes to do the, yes, okay, clearing. So they're every hour or so doing about 30 minutes of work. And then, uh?
Excuse me, point, so just trying to just make sure. One sheet of ice, so you're on the machine for 10 minutes, take another 20 minutes to get the machine ready, or swap it out, or whatever, and then you go do the other. So it's really about an hour. And I'm estimating, you know, a really good person, if you don't use all the water, you know, you can do it in probably 45 minutes versus an hour. But you understand, average, it's taken us about 20 minutes behind the house to get the machine front.
And can you just remind me of what the hourly cost to rent the ice is?
Depending on if you're a resident, let me make sure I say this correctly. I don't want to misquote you. Let me just look it up. It's on the website. I want to say it is 400, 400 an hour for some folks, and like people with our agreements, they got set rates. It may be 350 for Evanston residents and then 400 for others, but I need to double-check that.
And for the folks with agreements, it's roughly?
Northwestern's is $400 an hour, C Y H A is 425 an hour, our own Evanston group, I want to say is 350 an hour. So it it varies. But Northwestern is, you know, at, yeah.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
And Councilmember Burns.
I just wanted to make sure I'm clear. So you're saying, cutting the ice, but that's actually smoothing the ice over? I just want to make sure I understand the activity.
That's what ice cuts.
It's an interesting name, yeah, because you said cutting, but it's smoothing it out, which is a safety issue, right, is why you want to do it after every use, or how is that?
I mean, it imagine, you know, ice skates is a blade. Those blades are creating cuts along within the ice. So what happens, the Zamboni comes, it drops water that is currently spread evenly through over the ice so that the ice can refreeze level at a level perspective. So it is a safety issue. You get, you know, at the higher level of figure skating or ice hockey, you know, that ice get chopped up really bad, really quick. And so it is, in all our best interest, that we are resurfacing that ice after each different group use.
Perfect. Thank you so much. I think now we'd like to hear from Public Works.
Thank you.
Good evening again. Edgar Cano, Acting Public Works Agency Director. The first position we're asking for is a forestry crew leader. The forestry's tasked with maintaining over 32,000 public trees. Is, I'm sure a lot of you are aware, we're having a lot of storm damage and a lot of other just damage from winter precipitation and things of that matter. So we're asking for a crew leader to be able to handle the 25 to 30, excuse me, the 20 to 25 requests, 301 requests that we're getting per day. A lot of those requests are inspections. Unfortunately, a lot of our field staff isn't properly trained in to perform those inspections. So there's only a few certified arborists within our division. We're asking for another forestry crew leader, also hopefully be a certified arborist in order to be able to handle a lot of these inspections. As far as equipment operator for Streetsco, the Streets Division is handles the alley sidewalk maintenance, street maintenance of the city. It's also a pretty much a catch-all for all the other departments. So as Director Knighton stated, whenever graffiti removal needs assistance, we step up, we assist, or the Streets Department steps steps up and they assist. Same thing with animal control, as far as picking up dead animals. Unfortunately, we also have to assist with that as well. So as far as equipment operator two, the Streets Division has lost three positions within the last five years. Because of that, we're really feeling those effects. Our alley cutouts have dropped from 18 to 12. It's about a 33% reduction. And also, we've also reduced our asphalt pavement maintenance in-house by over 40%. Again, just because we do not have the field staff to be able to accomplish those goals that we're trying to achieve. The full-time arborist that we're asking for, that would be if the Tree Preservation Ordinance passes, well, we're going to be expecting an influx of permits, over 400. Again, we're going to need a certified arborist to be in-house to be able to take care and go over all of those permits. And the forestry tree services, contractual services, right now, the forestry department also assists with our snow and ice operations. So because of that, and the heavy winters that we've been having recently, we're not able to do the dormant season cutting. We're asking for this, these funds in order to hire a contractor to come in during the dormant season and to help us assist with over the 2,700 large oaks and elms that require trimming during that season. I'll take any questions?
Any questions? Go ahead, Councilmember Braithwaite, followed by Newsma.
Thank you, Mr. Braithwaite. So your position has changed with Dave's position being elevated. Who's going to be responsible, just as we, we're not there yet, but who's going to be responsible for for snow and everything that?
I'm still acting as the Public Services Bureau Chief as well, so I'll be handling both.
Okay, thank you. Important position as we move into the season, seriously.
Question about the arborist position. This is related to the Tree Preservation Ordinance, which has not yet been passed.
Correct.
If we do pass an ordinance, is there any revenue that we would expect to bring in from private, private residents paying to pay, paying for a permit to have a tree removed?
Yeah, unfortunately, I do not have that information. Again, I just stepped up into this role. I'm not sure if Deputy City Manager Stonebeck or Director Knighton will be able to speak to that.
I was quickly trying to pull up the memo. As you were asking that question, I didn't get a chance to do that, but we can send that in a budget memo. Yes, the, it was contemplated that if somebody is going to remove a tree out of, I think, a certain species, that we would be, we would be asking for some kind of payment for that.
But at this point, we probably don't have a firm projection as to how much that would bring in, since it's such a new concept.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yeah, and so I heard Councilmember Burns ask this before, and I thought that there was conversation, and maybe blanked out, about some increase in staff for like the fly dump and the stuff. Is that just this one equipment operator?
No, the fly dumping would be handled by our Recycling Division. The equipment operator two that you see here, that we're requesting is for the Streets Division.
Okay. And so you and I frequently talk about snow removal.
Correct.
Which, you know, trees are fine and all, but the calls I get are about snow and streets cleaning, and particularly along Dodge, where we have these lovely bike lanes that people park in, and so then therefore you can't clean them, and therefore you can't ride their bikes. So I, you know, I'm just not a tree person. And so I appreciate that we have to have the trees. I know they serve in a, you know, environmental people call me tomorrow. However, people need to drive their cars and ride their bikes and cross the street. And we still have the same issue with snow, which is where we plow the streets, we pack all the snow along the sidewalks, and then people, particularly those who are disabled, you know, pushing strollers, everything else, can't get down the sidewalk because there's... So what are we doing about that? Like, where is that in the budget? And I know we, you and I've talked about having those little machines that can do the curve cuts and stuff. I, you know, year after year, do not see that in the budget. And then we tell people to call our volunteer snow removal folks that don't ever work out. And so we end up ultimately with a bunch of seniors and people who can't walk down the street in the winter.
Right.
So I would love to see that addressed in the budget more than trees.
Sure thing, sure thing. And one thing I do want to mention, as far as the Streets Department Equipment Operator Two, so the Streets' primary focus in the wintertime is the snow and ice control and removal. So by adding this one position, it would help our efficiency in our operations, and it will also limit us from having to go to other other divisions to ask for personnel by at least, you know, one additional person. Every person helps, not being able, not having to pull that one person from Forestry or one person from our Water Sewer Department allows them to take care of any unforeseen issues that we could have because of the cold winter months. Again, with our, the two positions or one or two positions that, you know, we would ask for in order to assist with fly dumping, that division is actually, our Recycling Division, and they're the ones that do handle the bike lanes and any sidewalks adjacent to our city properties. So they would be able to assist with that during snow and ice removal.
And is there something in the budget for equipment? Because I think last time you and I talked, the other issue was that we don't have the, all the equipment we need to make it happen.
Correct. Unfortunately, right now, we haven't included anything in order to buy that equipment. But I mean, it's definitely something that we're looking at. And I mean, if the funds are there, we're more than happy to go out and and look for the equipment that we need.
So is there thought around this arborist, since this Tree Preservation Ordinance hasn't even passed yet, or even the first year, if it does pass, of having a part-time arborist and then using some of that money for things that are more practical, like snow removal, or equipment for snow removal, or something? And it's just, you know, we know it's going to snow, we know snow gets worse and worse, we know every year we have these complaints, some of which are not feasible, but people should, you know, be able to, particularly when you think about our seniors, Mr. Sutton's always here talking about shoveling out his driveway, and then he comes outside, and our plows have plowed him back in again. I mean, it seems to be that I would like us to move in a way that, again, talking about those services, people expect that we're getting closer to that and not doing as much response to people who have these other interests that maybe don't serve everybody in the community.
I mean, I'm always concerned about the snow and ice removal and our efficiency. I have a lot of ideas of equipment that we can buy, so I'll be more than happy to look into that. Definitely need the funding for it, but it would make my job and the job of the field staff a whole lot easier, so.
Can you make a budget memo for that, so we can have that conversation, please?
Sure, in regards to just any equipment or?
Well, the equipment we need to make the snow removal process more efficient, the staffing we need for that. I mean, even if it's pie in the sky, obviously, we can't do it all, but I would like to move the conversation and start thinking about that. It's a quality of life issue.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Burns.
The the arborist is inspecting trees on private property, right?
Correct.
Okay. You know, I don't know how often this happens, but just one story. And Director Callahan was the one that ultimately went out to to inspect this tree, but a fifth ward resident is not the owner of the home. She stays in an award, asked if we could send somebody out to inspect the tree. It was a tree that had big mushrooms coming out the end, which was an indicator that, indication that the tree may be on its way to falling and and needed to be removed. Michael Callahan, that, both parties who are the owners have had, I think, received conflicting opinions, and and Michael Callahan was able to come out and say, yeah, if this was on my property, I get it out of here. When we had that big storm, that tree fell down on the home. And the the tenant was, that's what they were concerned about, is that this tree is 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 damaged to the point where it will fall, you know, she had a elderly parent in the home and was concerned that the tree will will fall, and it did. So just going to your point about, Councilmember Fleming, about service, I do think there is a service we're providing with going out, and in particular with trees that are old and damaged, making sure that they're safe and they're not going to fall on homes or people or cars, et cetera. So I just wanted to make sure that that's what that position would do. Because right now, our director showed up to do that call, and it wasn't, you know, an employee, another staff person that was able to go out and do it. And I'm not sure how much of it of that we're able to do with limited staff. So just wanted to make sure I was clear on that. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
But would our forestry crew leader also do that? Because you mentioned the forestry crew leader, you would hope to find maybe an arborist for that position, right?
Correct.
Right. So right now, we have Michael, and the poor guy's worked to the bone. So I do think we need another tree expert arborist. I mean, I guess my concern is we have this forestry tree leader who you would hope to be an arborist or someone who can care for trees. And then we have a position on here that is literally just related to one ordinance.
So I mean, when they're not?
And I'm not criticizing your thing, I'm just voicing my concerns.
And when that person's not working on the ordinance, obviously, they can help out in in order to inspect other trees. Unfortunately, I don't, I don't know how free, how much free time the crew leader would have, because right now, we're just so far behind on on the tree issues. I mean, I'm sure you guys are getting the request.
Right, yeah, I know, yeah.
So we would like to dedicate that one just to improve our tree canopy here, our public one, as far as the one for the tree preservation, when they're not assisting and if they don't have any permits. have any permits, if that ever happens, they would obviously be able to help us take care of our, of our other trees.
Thank you very much. Okay, go ahead.
I just wanted to confirm, so we're still, a few months ago, or a month ago, I saw a lot of folks from, that were doing tree trimming and other tree maintenance in the ward, and then that stopped after the storm. We're still working on cleaning up from the storm, making, you know, where are we at right now with that?
I don't know exactly where we're at, but I know we are still looking out and inspecting all the trees from the previous storm. It just seems, once we catch up, another big wind event comes in, and we're back to where we started.
And I just want to add that, that, again, part of climate, climate action is with additional severe storms, we're going to see a lot more trees falling down, old trees in Evanston falling down. So, I just wanted to add that, that they weren't even, they were in the fifth ward doing some really good work maintaining trees in an area that had been historically overlooked, and then this big storm hit, they had to put all their attention on that, and now we're not able to maintain the trees block by block as we were, so, you know.
And I just want...
Yeah, thank you.
I'd like to stress, too, that, you know, in certain circumstances where a tree is a danger and a hazard, that if it's on city property, that becomes city liability as well. So, that's another expense that the council should take into consideration.
All right, this is my last point, because I feel like everyone is making me out to be like the person, because I don't give a damn about trees. The issue here for me is that trees are important, and we had Tree City USA a thousand times, and I get that. But when you have seniors who cannot walk down our streets because our snow plows come and shovel them in on the corners, it is an issue. And so, I think as much as we care about trees, and I get your point with climate change, climate change also is impacting us having these very severe winters. And if we continue to tell people, "Please shovel out your hydrants," and all these things, but we come behind them and plow them in, and we know it's freezing, I mean, we just are not setting up a good quality of living, and everyone doesn't drive. So, people, just as much as we pay attention to cars, we need to pay attention to the sidewalks, and people, I have a lady in my ward who's in a wheelchair, and she can't get to her car half the winter because we've plowed her in. And it is a serious issue, and I can't just tell her, like, "Well, go out there and, you know, figure it out." I mean, I think we have to really be mindful of the quality of life, and that involves snow removal and the way in which we can do it. And I hear all the time, as we all do, about Skokie and how great they are about plowing their sidewalks. I'm not getting up to that standard, but I think that there is a way in which we can spend some money that, again, is not just for tree care, but it's for quality of life and snow. And Edgar and I have had this conversation a million times, so he knows I'm not taking it out on him.
Yes, no, but I do want to mention, again, we do not plow the, or, excuse me, we do not shovel the sidewalks just adjacent to city, or, excuse me, to private property. Another thing...
I'm talking about the corners, where we plow up all the snow on the corners.
Right, well, I do also want to mention that even though if we do get extra personnel and extra equipment, I do want to set that expectation that that will still happen on some occasion, not only on the crosswalks, but also in the driveway aprons. I was just at a snow conference last Thursday, where, I mean, this is an issue that every municipality is having, unfortunately, and, you know, there's not a single answer or a series of answers in order to take care of that. We'll just make sure to train our employees as best as we can. With added equipment, definitely does make the whole job easier, and we'll do our best we can for our community.
Great, thank you very much. And let's move on to the next...
What's next?
Great, sorry, I was, I was, we had a little, sorry, Councilmember Newsma, I had a body language mishap, but, go ahead.
This is the end of the position list, and I just want to underscore a couple items. One, that department directors have completed memos on all of the positions that you've seen, that you've heard about. Those are available on the budget website, or, sorry, on the budget page of the city's website, and they were emailed to council as well when we first sent out the proposed budget. Second, all of these requests for budget memos that you've been throwing out tonight, that you've been hearing your colleagues say, I've been tracking those as well, and we will work with staff to get those completed and published in a timely manner as well. So, know that we are tracking those, too.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Councilmember Ravel, followed by Wynne.
Well, I just, I'm glad that Kate mentioned that the memo from staff that's on our, on the website. It is definitely worth reading. It's really full of wonderful detail about why, why the various positions are being requested, and I wish a lot of our residents would read it, because then they'd understand why it was taking a long time to get their parkway tree trimmed, or why it was taking a long time to get their permit. I mean, it was just a really, really helpful memo from staff, and I just want to say how much I appreciated it.
Point of information, are we, is Councilmember Kelly's section still going now? Are we moving back to the normal, back to the rotation?
I believe we've completed the description of requested new positions.
Okay, so just as a reminder, I want to get back in the order that we had. I know it was Councilmember Kelly, and, you know, myself, or Councilmember Braithwaite. So, just want to...
Well, what I have here is Councilmember Wynne, followed by Newsma, followed by Reed. Are there others, and then anyone else's? Go ahead.
I had a question regarding the seven-hundred-and-fifty for the beaches.
Okay, so I have Wynne, Newsma, Reed, Braithwaite, and if there's others, just feel free to switch on your lights, but let's go ahead with Councilmember Wynne.
It's just a brief request for staff. I think that it's also useful for the new council members, and actually, everyone who's on the council, to possibly, to read last year's budget memos as well, to understand how we are, where we are right now. Are those available? Kate, is that the line that I'm seeing here on the website?
They are. I believe any former years have been moved. If you go to the, there's prior year budgets on the left-hand column, yeah, of the budget page.
All right, because it's always very informative to go back and read some of these things that help you understand why is this year's budget like it is. So, thank you.
Yep, and staff prepares, you know, upwards of eighty budget memos each year, so that information is really out there and plentiful.
That's great, thank you. Councilmember Newsma, followed by Reed, and then Braithwaite.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And per Councilmember Reed's kind of inquiry, I have some kind of follow-on questions for this discussion, but that kind of segues into some different concepts of the budget that I would like to, I'd like to address as well. So, I'll just, I'll just go. This department request for additional positions ended with P, and if we go a few more letters down the alphabet, we end up with S. So, I would like to talk about the Sustainability Department, and talk a little bit about CARP and environmental justice. And I do think that the budget memo and the budget process that we have in front of this, in front of us tonight, was, it's a lot of work. And I just want to say thanks to Kate and Hitesh for bringing us this far, understanding that this is just the, you know, the first night we're discussing this, and it's going to take us a couple of months to sort through this. So, I would like to kind of note that I hope that as we continue this process, that CARP implementation and environmental justice issues will receive some more focus. I think perhaps we have suffered from the vacancy in the Office of Sustainability Coordinator over the last few months. Fortunately, we have Kara Pratt, who joined us last week, two weeks ago. So, we are, we're turning the corner, and we're going to be heading in the right direction, and Kara's going to, you know, be able to jump into the deep end here and get some work done. You know, we did, in last year's budget process, CARP implementation was kind of highlighted in several different points, at several different points, it was listed as a city council goal, and we don't have that structure in our budget process this year. So, that kind of, as a sidebar, underscores the need for us to do a comprehensive plan, a strategic plan, that will allow us to refresh our city council goals, refresh our community goals, and allow us to have this kind of conversation with some priorities already having been identified. I do have a specific question. It's on page eighty-seven of the packet, and this is in the budget memo, under the city council, or, I'm sorry, the city manager's office section. There are a number of performance measures listed, and I'm pleased that CARP is very clearly addressed in one of these, one of these performance measures. I don't at all like the content of how it's expressed. I like the fact that the idea is at least there, so, yeah, I will follow up on that in a budget memo, I suppose, or an offline conversation, but I like the fact that, at least in the city manager's office, CARP was addressed as a performance measurement. I want to make sure we can implement a more reasonable and accurate metric. I also want to acknowledge that CARP is not just a single project, not just a single department. We have a sustainability person, whose budget is half in the sustainability office, and a twenty-five percent here and twenty-five percent there, I believe. Ms. Kandreski, can you confirm that that's the case?
Yes. Ms. Lewis-Liken, do you have the breakdown?
Right, and so, I just want to make sure that we, that we're not losing sustainability in the mix because it's spread too thin. I do want to have a focus on sustainability. Having said that, sustainability is not just one project, and everything else is separate. Sustainability, CARP implementation, environmental justice, climate action is a lens through which decisions should be evaluated at every level of the organization. And we're starting to see that happen here. The Capital Plan really takes a deep dive into CARP, as it should. So, you know, thank you, Laura, for doing that. We'll talk more about that later. Affordable housing, we have Lot One project going in on South Boulevard. CARP was, like, built into that. And so, that kind of thing is, we're heading in the right direction, and I want to make sure we are, you know, budgeting ourselves and aligning the management of the city to focus on climate action and CARP. I talked briefly about doing a CARP implementation plan and an environmental justice implementation plan as part of that strategic plan, or part of the comprehensive plan, so I'm very pleased if that were to be the case. I don't want to, you know, short-change the specific attention on CARP and EJ, because that's, those are in and of themselves, pretty massive. So, this comprehensive plan is going to be fairly comprehensive. It's in the title, I guess.
Five-hundred thousand, I think.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So, we can, we can, I'm glad we can take advantage of ARPA money and move ourselves in the right direction there. I'm also concerned that, you know, we are not setting ourselves up by spending ARPA money on CARP implementation, setting ourselves up to just, you know, run into a cliff or run off the cliff in a few years when ARPA money runs out. So, on an ongoing basis, I want to make sure we're focused on CARP implementation, and that includes looking for sources of funding. Just as one idea, you know, perhaps we could direct the NICOR franchise fee into a climate action fund. We've had similar discussions about a comm-ed franchise fee in the past, funding that type of fund. We don't have at the moment a comm-ed franchise agreement, maybe we will, maybe there's some other remittances outside the, outside the scope of a franchise agreement. So, I have, I think I've said my piece on CARP and environmental justice. I want to make sure we're focused on those during this process for budgeting this year. I also want to talk about beaches, I want to talk about crossing guards, and I want to talk about public safety. So, I'll defer to the mayor as to how best to handle the conversation here.
Well, I would recommend that you talk about them. I would, I would urge efficiency, just because there's a lot of members of council, but I would say, go ahead and say your piece.
Okay, beaches. I am of the position that we should make the beaches of Evanston free to Evanston residents seven days a week last summer. That's the commitment that we made at one of our first council meetings this, this session of the city council, back in May, or maybe it was early June. So, beaches, free all summer long, seven days a week. Crossing guards. As a taxpayer, honestly, I don't care if it's the city of Evanston or the District Sixty-Five that pays for crossing guards. Either way, they have to be there. Either way, the money's coming out of my pocket as a taxpayer, so in a sense, it really doesn't matter. As a city council member, however, I would be very happy if we have that money to spend on other stuff. So, I'll defer that discussion to, you know, to the appropriate committee, and trust that they will handle that issue properly. And then in terms of public safety, I guess I have a question. I'm not sure who's the right person to answer it, but I was hoping that we would have some actionable recommendations from the mayor's committee to reimagine public safety that we could consider as we talk about our budget for next year. So, Mr. Mayor, can you speak to that?
I think it's not impossible that that would occur during the course of this budget cycle. The Reimagining Public Safety Committee is broken into three working groups. I think two of those working groups are close to having recommendations, and one of those two sets of recommendations is likely to have budgetary impact. That would be from the Violence Prevention and Violence Interruption Working Group, but at this time, I just give that high-level status report and say there's a good chance, but no certainty, that that would be complete on that timeframe.
Okay, I would certainly welcome that input. If we're talking about our public safety budget, I'm being kind of pulled in two different directions. On the one hand, similar to what we've seen here, a shortage in manpower, person power, that I have, I have felt that in conversations with the police department, that they don't have enough manpower to do what we are asking them to do. On the other hand, looking at our budget documents in our packet, if we look at our city of Evanston's ratio of, you know, of police officers per capita, we are relatively high. So, that points perhaps in a different direction. So, I don't have any answers, I'm just asking questions at this point, and would hope that that committee would be able to help me answer some of those.
Thank you. So, we go to Councilmember Reed, followed by Braithwaite, followed by Kelly.
Thank you. So, I have a number of questions, I guess, since it's a topic that's come up. I'll start with beaches, and Director Hemingway, yes. So, one, I just am, you know, that we're still in the early stages, but I want to make sure that we're accurate as we're moving through this, because a hundred-and-fifty-thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars could make a huge difference, or it could make a substantial difference in our discussions and where we move. So, I'm curious, how did, I see the number, seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand. My estimate would be about a hundred-and-fifty to two-hundred-thousand dollars less than that, if we made beaches free just for Evanston residents. So, I guess I want to get a bit of clarification. One, what is the revenue that we've received this year with the three free days for Evanston residents, and then, you know, how did you get to this seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar number?
Sure, thank you, sir. If you all look at the budget memos, there's a memo in there that shows you the actual revenues received this year. Total, which takes into account, the budget memo has all the revenues that's generated off of our beach sales.
Yeah, just looking for the, yeah.
So, for Evanston residents, and it's, again, it's in your packet.
Can you, Director, maybe point us to which date that came out?
Page forty, it's on page forty of the budget memos.
It was in the budget memos, which are online on the budget page, it's not in the packet, which is the computer.
Crystal clear, and they're sorted by date. So, I'm looking in October eighteenth, or eleventh, the one that came out in October eleventh, September thirtieth, the one before that. Thank you, no worries.
So, just, where does seven-hundred-and-fifty, so, in terms of revenues that you see in front of you, we were able, with this, this year's program, we still generated nine-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand dollars off of beach sales. That includes tokens and daily passes, total, residents and non-residents. That's our total sales of revenue off beaches. In the Parks and Rec budget for beaches, which has more than just sales of beach tokens and dailies, we have a one-point-two-million-dollar number in our budget. All we did, so the seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, we took a conservative approach in trying to, if beaches are made free, we will estimate, estimatedly, just, you know, lose about seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars... free, we will estimate, estimatedly, just, you know, lose about $750,000 based off that $1.2 million. What we put in this year's budget is $450,000 for beach revenue. Now, that $400,000, if you, I've made a total of $1.3 million off of beach activity this season.
I'm sorry. I just, I also want to keep, just, I want to be judicious with the time that I'm using here.
Sure.
So I just specifically, you know, beach operations, great. I'm looking at free beaches for Evanston residents. So what is the total revenue that was brought in last year from beach sales for Evanston residents?
All right. I mean, I got, because it's broken down into various categories, let me just, you've got $406,000 on preseason sales, another $103,000. That gets us to $510,000. Resident season tokens here, nine, nine. And then you have to take a percentage of your, so you, so from resident token sales, you are looking at approximately $500,000 just off resident sales from preseason and during the season.
And that number?
Let me finish.
Well, I just want to be, again, judicious with the time. So $500,000 for last year, and then that number holds fairly steady year over year, correct?
No, it varies. And so the other part here that I was...
Can you just, can you finish the sentence you were saying before?
Yeah. The other part that's here, and what you'll have is, we have, we have an agreement with Skokie that you all have to consider. Right now, we have a partnership agreement that allows Evanston residents to buy passes to Skokie's water park and splash pad at a Skokie resident rate, and we do the same thing for them to buy beach tokens from us. So I add that revenue because I'm thinking if we're doing it maybe for us, you may want, you know, we may want to try to reciprocate our existing agreement. So as I add those revenues in to that $510,000, you're looking at, you add another $100,000, you get to about $610,000. And then of your daily passes, we are just taking a rough estimate. We brought in $254,000 of daily passes. We took about 150 of that $254,000, added it to that 600, and that's how you get to the 750. And so that was my process to just get to 750. So took Evanston, Skokie, and then about, you know, three fifths of our daily passes sales, because we don't track where you come from on dailies. So we took about three fifths of that and added that to the total, and that's where the 750 comes from.
Yeah, yeah. Can I ask? Yeah.
And the breakdown is in the budget memo.
Anyone else who wants to use my time to ask questions? Go ahead, I guess.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much, Director. And I think this is an important number for us to remember. I mean, you rounded up, you're looking at about a million dollar in revenue. And so you've addressed that, and I think the bigger question is, do you have our expenses somewhere in the memo to help us see the big picture?
Put the expenses in there? No, I didn't. I didn't. I just focused on the revenue. I mean, I can send what we spent on the expense side.
And I'm sorry to interrupt. So here's what I see as critical, and all, excuse me, Councilmember Wynn mentioned this, looking back at previous memos. So you have come to us with different scenarios in terms of we've lost a dog beach. So that's land that we can't get back, unfortunately. Whatever year we had that conversation, the cost to replace that was exorbitant. I don't even remember. So I guess where I'm going with this is looking at the changing climate, looking at also the fact that, is it the tide is increasing, whatever the terminology is, we're losing valuable lakefront property. Continuing to repair that is a cost that I don't see in front of me. So I shared this dynamic at our last meeting. It's just that I can't predict out how long we're going to have a beach to go to. But here's what I do know based on previous budgets. The cost of operating will always increase, and I supported the pilot in an effort to gain information, right? And I, and I'll be honest, and Second Ward residents, please provide feedback to me and also your other council members. Like, I didn't really understand the problem we were trying to solve. I understand what the goal was, but because we have, and just looking at these numbers, there are opportunities to get tokens. My concern is, this year we have ARPA and we had a pilot. You look at trying to replace a million dollars moving forward for our beach operations that should naturally increase.
Point of information, it's 750.
I'm sorry, this is my time, and I'm speaking directly to the director.
It's my time, but if you're, just, correct number is 750,000.
So my question to you, Director, is, as we're looking out in future budgets to the best of your ability, I'm trying to understand the long-term impact. Because for some minor inconveniences, a million dollars outside of our budget, which I hope we can all understand, to member councils, based on what you projected in the memo, not a hypothetical, has a huge impact to our budget beyond what we would normally recoup with our ARPA funds. So anything that you can do to help us understand that would be impactful, as well as any projected cost to the erosion of our lakes as well. Thank you very much, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Next will be Councilmember Kelly, followed by Fleming.
And, that's fine, but I was not, I mean, if you're talking about this, go ahead, Councilmember Kelly and Fleming, but just to be clear, I was nowhere near done.
No, go ahead.
Yeah, I think they were both for general discussion. It was my...
So I just want to say, one, 750,000, that's a big round to a million from 750, and...
Oh, look at the information. I didn't make it up.
But I thought you referenced it.
So let's...
And also, I think, you know, we did, there were programs this summer that we didn't run that generate funds, right? Aquatics, the rental program. And also, I mean, we need to, since we value this, we value inclusivity and everything in the city, let's figure it out. We, I do feel we should have tokens still, and I think as we issue tokens, we can ask people if they'd be willing to make a donation to our Beach Access Fund. And I would bet, I know Evanstonians, I have a feeling we would generate a lot of revenue if we made that part of our token distribution program. Right. Well, I think we can do it more proactively, even with, because this is a new program. We didn't have this before. So where it's free for everybody. And I think a lot of people want to see this, so I think there would be a new, a bigger, more spirit involved in wanting to donate than in the past where everybody had to buy it, with the exception of, you know, some people who were in the right place at the right time.
All right. Let's go back to Councilmember Reed. I think in the interest of efficiency, let's go back to Councilmember Reed and kind of finish your comments, and then we'll see if there's anyone left before we move on to SP2.
Okay. So, yeah, just with, beaches was just a topic I wanted to touch on. Again, rounding 750 up to a million, as Councilmember Kelly said, is a fairly large round. I know there are estimates of what we were projected to lose this year because we made the beaches free for three days a week. You know, it doesn't seem like the revenue lost aligns with the fact that we cut three days. It seems like revenue was fairly steady from year over year. So I would, I would think that, you know, in particular, if we make this free for Evanston residents and Skokie residents, whoever we need to make it free for, I'm supportive of making it free for, honestly, everyone, but, you know, I think we can still realize the revenue necessary to provide all of these services, particularly as we're looking at alternative revenue sources such as parking along the lakefront and increased activities along the lakefront. Moving on, I'd like to talk about, say it again? Oh, Councilmember Fleming has a lakefront question, so.
Go ahead, Councilmember Fleming.
Thank you. So to clarify...
Just for, just like a little housekeeping. So at the end of this comment, exchange, we're going to go back to Councilmember Reed and then attempt to wrap. There's a few more people who've signed up to speak, but I'd like us to begin to bring this part of the discussion to a close.
Okay. So to clarify, this number is for free beaches every day, not back to the three-day-a-week program?
That is correct. That is, that's the estimate of the revenue loss for every day.
So there is maybe still room to just, this year, continue the three-days-a-week program? That is, that is not $750,000?
Yeah, that's your decision. That's your decision.
I wish. Nothing is my decision, but I know she may. But to clarify your point about the Skokie reciprocal program, which I know people do use, that was like $150,000? Or you kind of guesstimated that based on the day passes?
The 150 is three fifths of the daily sales. Skokie is, just go with 100, 100,000.
Okay. So just so I'm correct in my understanding, we could have free beaches for Evanston residents and still do a Skokie reciprocal program where they would still buy a reduced cost or what used to be maybe an Evanston cost pass, and our folks could still buy the Skokie resident cost beach pass. So having a free beach for Evanston residents, whether it's three days or five days or whatever the days are, does not mean we still could not do some kind of discounted entry for Skokie residents. I just want to clarify that having free beaches in Evanston doesn't mean we cannot have a Skokie reciprocal program for discounted use for their pools, and they would have then discounted use for our beaches.
That is correct.
Okay.
Right. I just, you know, because of how the deal currently is, that's the reason why I included the number. But I understand your point.
Right. But if we charge Chicago people, you know, I looked at last year, I think we'll matter when Nycor somebody charges, like, really high to go to their beach, and almost, I think you can't even go to the beach if you're not a resident on the weekend or something. So there's a way we could structure a fee system.
Sure.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay. That's, I have the floor again. No more questions about the beach at this moment. I do want to move on to a few other revenue questions that I have. One, well, on the revenue side, Manager Ganderzki, we are including the ARPA funding in this, in the 2022 budget. It seems like about, what is it? Almost all of it is there. The total that we're receiving is, what, 43 million? And then it seems as though, was it 40 million did I see in the budget? 30 million? Okay. And are we, are you, are we definitely anticipating spending 30 million in calendar year 2022?
Well, we have two years to commit the funds and then four years to spend.
So, but if we're including 30 million in the 2022 budget, I would expect that we anticipate spending 30 million in the '22 budget. And I wonder, similar, and Councilmember Fleming is now doing something different, but my understanding, for example, is other units of government, such as the county, are having a separate budgeting process for their ARPA funds and keeping it what I might consider a bit cleaner in that, you know, it's very clear how those funds are being used versus, you know, kind of intermingling that with the annual budget process.
Just to clarify, that 25 million, that's sort of in the ARPA fund, I'm sorry, 30 million total in the ARPA fund, that is just a number at the moment. Just understanding that we will be receiving another 21 million next year in revenue, that is, that is known, right? We will receive the second half. Council, I'm sorry, the, let me clarify. The revenue that will be coming in next year is 21 million and change. We've received 21 million and change this year. So the sort of revenue coming into the fund, when we're doing the fund budgeting for, for the ARPA fund, the revenue's coming in this year and it's coming in next year. Our expenses going out can happen through 2024. Again, the 30 million total was, was put in as a placeholder as we, as the council works through specific projects and programs that would be funded out of ARPA. So understanding that ARPA is sort of happening on a separate track, there have been meetings specific to ARPA, and I would expect that any projects that would be funded from ARPA would be approved by council before they fit into that total budget dollar, budget, sort of budget amount for the year. So I would not expect that that 30 million would all be spent in 2022, but that is, you know, attempted to encompass any amount we may spend on ARPA next year.
Yeah. So, you know, I will just say that I believe we need to, certainly where it's very clear, you know, we're replacing revenue with ARPA funds. I think that, you know, there's a million dollars here, a million there, whatever it is, those funds should be, you know, very clearly put into the budget. But I think that for unallocated ARPA money, it may make sense to have a cleaner, separate process in accounting for how those funds are going to be utilized and not put it in the budget to create what I think would create some confusion. So I'll move on from that. I'm curious about a number of licenses that we have. One, I noticed in the budget, so this might be for community development, but let me say it and then we can figure out. Heating, vent, and AC permits. That was listed in the budget under other tax, or, under permits, I suppose it's permits. So heating, vent, AC permits. Who can speak to that? I can't tell you what page it's on, but I can tell you if you, if you're on the budget site or the budget page, it is...
If you want to ask your question, maybe I can answer it without looking at the budget.
Yeah. So right now, it's listed as zero revenue. So there are no permits being requested for heating vents and AC permits? No one's changing out there?
No, no, that's, that's, we, that shouldn't, that shouldn't be there anymore. That, a couple of years ago, we moved all those into building permits because sometimes what would happen is somebody would come in with a project, and they'd be doing a heating, venting, and they'd be doing a plumbing and an electrical, and they pay one big permit fee. And so breaking that out into individual permits doesn't work for our system. So everything, every building permit goes into one line item, which is a few up from their other building permits, 100 dot 21 dot 2126 52080. That's where anybody who's pulling that type of permit, that revenue will go there.
Do we know, just internally, how many folks are pulling heating or AC permits?
Yes, we could, we could find that.
Yeah, okay. So my, the reason I mention that is I suppose that the permit for, you know, there's a separate permit cost for the various, you know, items. That's correct. So I'm interested in, you know, particularly looking at what might be termed as, you know, meeting, looking at our ARPA goals, if someone is replacing their heating or cooling system and they're not using an efficient system, I would like to charge them more for the permit to encourage, as a means to encourage folks to just switch over to the cleaner system.
I'm going to guess that if somebody's installing a new heating and cooling system today, they're probably going to be getting greater efficiency. Most systems have some, some efficiency factor. And again, I'm just going to play a building permit inspector or even a contractor. Those private companies have made measures to improve the system. So whether they're adding a new one or they're replacing something, it's going to be better than what they, than what they already have.
Okay.
And some of those, it's hard, I would push back a little bit and say that's hard because depending on the building type or the type, the size of the home or what they're trying to accomplish, it's hard to say what, assign a value to whether they're doing something that's improving the energy efficiency and without adding an extra cost, because there's always something better you can do. I had a resident who had an idea about something that they wanted to do, they thought they were going to be improving their efficiency, they had a lot of extra money to maybe spend on something, and so they were ready to do a lot of things, but it wasn't necessarily going to improve their, their overall opportunity to reduce their carbon footprint, but it just, it all kind of added up to seem like a good idea. So there's a, there's a spectrum on which you can spend money to improve your efficiency that gets more costly as you add more things.
Okay. Thank you for that. And then rooming house licenses, is that something that your department would deal with?
We share that with health, but yes.
Okay. So Director Ogbo is here as well. So I see that rooming house licenses brought in previously 165,000, over $165,000 in revenue annually, and now that's listed as zero. Do we know... Do we know why?
Right, I think it's move, it move, health does some of it, CD does some of it, believe some of that was zeroed out and moved into the Community Development Department. Is that correct? So it was, it, some of these things represent zero because they changed departments, because it, two years ago, property maintenance, which did the inspections for that work, was housed in the Health and Human Services Department, and then that moved to Community Development. So some of those zeros you see were based on the shifts that that took place there.
So do we know what the estimate is for 2022 then?
We can get that for you.
195,000. Okay, so I'd like to look at the rooming house licenses and the the fees for rooming house licenses and see if we can't gain additional revenue there to help with enforcement, as we know that has been a an issue that has been raised quite frequently.
Keeping my rooming house licenses also includes our hotels.
There's not a separate hotel, because I believe saying that's a separate hotel tax.
Right, so when, that's, that is on the occupant of the room. So when you, when you take a room at at a hotel in Evanston, you as the user pay a fee. So the the license, the the fees that we collect that you're seeking more information on, that's something that the operator pays. So that ranges from somebody who operates a rooming house to the Hyatt House.
Okay, okay, and right, and then moving on to additional revenue questions and items. With our wheel tax, I'm interested in, again, environmental pricing for the wheel tax. I'd love to see, you know, I think, keeping the the rate for a single car registered to a single address or unit is fine, but I think once folks start getting over one car and owning two or three cars, I think certainly having a wheel tax price that encourages folks to consolidate vehicles if necessary, and certainly accounts for the additional cost that is burdened on to the taxpayers, as we'll get into shortly. We have a capital improvement, capital improvements that are woefully underfunded, and you know, a large, a very substantial portion of that is maintaining infrastructure that supports vehicles. So I think we should recognize that, particularly with folks who are putting more of a burden on the system by owning multiple cars. Moving on from that is looking at a progressive rental registration fees, I think luxury units. You know, and we can figure out how to define luxury units. Is it units that require an income over 100% of AMI, or is it 110, or whatever the case? But I think luxury rental units, when they register, should pay a higher registration fee, as well as looking at a a tax on those leases for those luxury units to to gain additional revenue. I'm I'm curious about a value-added tax for legal and consulting fees. I don't recall if there is some kind of, if there is a state prohibition on charging a tax for legal and consulting fees that take place within the city. My understanding is that we currently do not gain revenue such as, you know, as we do with sales tax for those services that are provided within city limits, and so I'd like to look in to that. Vacant properties, if if residential property, we know in both in my ward and in other wards, particularly in the Eighth and Fifth Ward, there are units. And also, this is, happens with some of these luxury developments across the city. We have units that sit vacant for a long period of time, and I'd love, you know, to to have a vacancy tax or fee assessed on long-term residential vacancies. One, to encourage folks, if they need to, to lower rental costs, but also to help provide support for property inspections and services. And then, you know, lastly, I'll I'll close up with this section, is again, progressive excise tax, the progressive sales tax for, we have a liquor tax that brings in, you know, quite a bit of revenue, I think for for high-ticket items, that there should be a kind of a progressive or a luxury excise tax on, for liquor expenditures that are top shelf. And then I will close out with this one, as well as looking at, you know, with parking lots that are not, that that are impervious and do not allow stormwater drainage. I'd be interested in looking at stormwater, increasing or instituting stormwater drainage fees for those impervious surfaces across the city, again, to bring in additional revenue to support our environmental goals.
Thank you. So the final three speakers on SP one are going to be council members Braithwaite, Kelly, and Nusma, and then we'll move to SP two.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to, just in interest of time, Councilmember Nusma talked a little bit about public safety. We are currently in a conversation, yourself, Alvin Dwin, with Albany Care, Greenwood Care. There was a recent press release just regarding the number of carjackings, the aggressiveness of our homeless. And I've had a couple of questions with our police department, and I think just when we look at the number of vacancies that we have and multiple conversations going on, I think that that's something chief, that, you know, we can explore at at the Human Services. You know, my concern is this, we we understand what's going on on the national scene. We also understand what's going on in the city of Chicago. My concern, and there may not be a direct correlation, so that's why, you know, hopefully we can unpack this at the next Human Services, just is there a direct correlation between the reduced staff and increased crime, and if so, to be thoughtful of how do we, you know, how do we offset that? Like, I I think everyone behind here is is critical in terms of police brutality and all the things that we're seeing nationally, but some of the things that I see locally are concerned, and I just want to make sure that in terms of the resources that you need to keep our towns safe, that we're paying very close attention to that.
Good evening, council members, mayor, clerk, city manager, and council. Yes, there is a direct correlation, absolutely. As of today, at 5:00 PM, we are down 19 officers. So people are stressed out and exhausted on the job, and that's not good. They're working double shifts. And it is time to move towards working on a solution for it. And we have begun those talks with the union, as well as human research, human resources, as well as City Manager Ganderski.
Yeah, thank you. And I'm, and I'm sure some of that can be just the age of our officers, also what we're seeing nationally, people taking early leaves. Can you, anything you can do to give us a real good picture of some of the pressures that you're dealing with at the police station, I think will be extremely helpful, which also includes, are there any officers that are on the bench? I mean, earlier, I think last month, we had a conversation around looking at policies. They gave our fire chiefs a little bit more flexibility in bringing people on in a more efficient way, and if there are things that we can do to assist with our police department, I think that that's critical.
Yes, we are speaking internally about some plans for recruitment and retention, as well as an emphasis on wellness and just taking care of each other. So some of those plans I have not spoken to staff about just yet, so I'd like to just keep those close to the vest as we continue to work out a solution and plans, but we are engaged in those talks.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Just point of information, I'm sorry, for clarification, for two things that were just raised. The initial one, I'll, I'll start with the second one, because it was just brought up, but just point of information, the policy that you're referring to with the firefighters was vetoed by the mayor because it was not in, it did not comport with state law, so we wouldn't have that option for the police department. But then two, the issue was raised about a correlation between staffing and an increase in vehicle theft. And I just want to make sure, you know, it's being said from the dais here, is there, were there, have you or folks in your department done an actual statistical analysis of both employment rates at EPD and the crime rates to determine that there actually is a significant statistical math people please, a statistical correlation to show that, you know, that is in fact true?
So when we do our crime statistics, that helps us to make those assessments. So as in comparison to 2020, we were up nearly 47% in violent crimes against persons. So those statistics help us make those analysis.
So we're up 40%, and then what are we down in staff?
As of today, 19 officers.
Well, for 2020, if if.
For 2020?
Yeah.
Lou, you have those numbers for 2020?
And and I guess I'm just specifically asking, there has been, the police department has done some research that shows that there is a definite correlation between a decrease in staffing and then an increase in in crime.
And I would just jump in, because I want to, I think that if you could send us any analysis in writing, there's obviously tremendous interest up here in figuring out the right way to ensure public safety and helping us better understand that correlation and what what we can learn from it, I think would be, I think we really, really appreciate that information.
Okay.
Thank you very, very much. The the last speaker will be Councilmember Kelly.
Thank you. So Kelly, do we have a total number of, thank you, by the way, staff, for all the memos on the new positions with regard to the positions that were held vacant that are being filled, the total number there?
Ms. Lewis Licken has that number.
It's, it was 29 positions that were held vacant in the budget last year. I think it's 23 are being filled, are being proposed to be filled sort of in the same way they were held vacant. The rest are being filled but were reclassified or moved around a little bit. There may have been some changes. So in sort of dollars and cents, we are proposing to put all 29 of those positions back in.
And could, is it possible to get memos on those?
Yeah, we could provide a list and and a bit of a summary at least, you know, on on those positions as well.
Thank you. And then also, sort of following up with Jonathan's question to Daniel about the, his reimagining public safety. So Daniel, you mentioned that there would be, you expected a positive budgetary impact as a result. When are you, when do you think that, and I I imagine through staffing that, you know, we, staffing would would shift. So we've, I think we're, I think it's seven that we're bringing back, right? Seven positions held vacant in the police department, we're filling in the 21 budget, which is about, I know it's, we're still keeping the 201, you know, official staffing number, but we're filling seven, which is about a million dollar or close to million dollar increase on salaries and benefits.
Yep, so there there were eight positions held vacant in the police department last year. Two of those were commanders, one was an officer, and the remainder were back office staff of administrative staff, so so just out of those eight, three were sworn and five were civilian positions.
So my question, Daniel, is have you, I mean, because certainly nobody ever, nobody ever wants to have to lay people off, so given, you know, that you expect a positive budgetary impact, have you had conversations about the filling of these positions and maybe thought creatively about, you know, how you go forward with that, or if you go forward with that, or I'm just wondering from your perspective as heading up the program for reimagining public safety?
Well, I have been urging the individuals who are leading these working groups to to be as expeditious as possible, given the timeframe that we're dealing with. The, the, I'd mentioned there's three working groups. I think two are kind of nearing a point of making a recommendation of those two. One could, I think, likely have a budgetary impact. The other one, by the way, is likely to, I think, could well help free up some some staff time in the in the police department. But the the one that I think may have a budgetary impact is one that I do not myself lead. And I'm just doing my best to encourage them to do their work on a timeframe that will enable itself to be folded into this process. But we're dealing with, you know, an enormously dedicated, talented group of volunteers who, you know, all have more than full-time other commitments and can only, can only be asked to do so much. So I don't want to overpromise on behalf of people who are stretched enormously thin, kind of a specific date certain by which that could be done. In the meantime, I think we have no choice but to, of course, move forward with this budget process.
Sure, with the budget process, yes. But I'm just wondering, have you had conversations about these positions in light of the work you're doing on reimagining safety?
I think that would be premature at this point, based on where the work is. All right, well, thank you to all for the both robust discussion, for the detailed information from staff, which was very, very informative, I think, for for all of us. With that, I would entertain a motion on SP two to allow discussion on that item.
I move discussion of item SP two, discussion on our 2022 capital improvement program.
I will second.
Councilmember Reed moves discussion on item SP two. Councilmember Nusma seconds, and we'll begin with Ms. Biggs with a brief presentation.
Hello, thank you, Honored City Councilmembers, Mayor, City Clerk. My name is Laura Biggs. I am the City Engineer for Evanston, and I'm here tonight to talk to you about our proposed CIP program for 2022. So I wanted to give a bit of an overview about how the CIP is put together. We actually have seven portions to our CIP. We have street resurfacing, water main, transportation, which is other projects like bridges and traffic signals, parks, facilities, water treatment, the library, and miscellaneous. So you'll note, there's quite a disparity in how these are funded. Street resurfacing, water main and sewer generally is funded really well. It includes a lot of work on our our water distribution system, and we get a lot of federal grants in this area compared to some of the other areas which are much smaller. We also, when we're putting it together, we have to consider the funding sources that we have available in order to fund the CIP. So as you look at this table, you'll see that the first three lines are related to bonds that are sold in order to fund. The general obligation bonds are 10.4 million. We are also proposing to sell some bond funding for water and library for a total of 16.2 million dollars. I will say, the general obligation bonds that we sell are the only funding source that has no limitation in how we spend it. All of the other funding sources of which, which make up the bulk of actually the capital improvement program, all come with limitations. So whether they're geographic or they can only be used on certain assets, we have to take the projects that are proposed versus the funding sources available and match them up to make sure that we are spending the money in the way that is most appropriate. How do we decide our capital improvement projects? Well, we have several sources from this, and this is all detailed, much greater detail in the memo. But essentially, on the right side, you see suggestions to the mayor, Alderman, City Manager, and 311. Those really constitute citizen requests, and we have a number of examples of projects that are funded that way, including things like park rehab, tennis court resurfacing, the skate park, which we were talking about, is a citizen request that has bubbled up, versus O and M met issues that come up from our staff, adopted plans such as the multimodal plan that we continue to implement, and legal requirements. So things like the lead service line replacement, which we've talked about quite a bit lately, is being handed to us as a legal requirement by the state of Illinois. And I also wanted to mention, projects have a life cycle that is actually quite long. So we begin the planning phase, and it typically takes two to five years to get through the concept planning. During that time, we often have public engagement to help us determine what the scope of a project is. Then we go into design, where usually there's very little public engagement and no discussion with the public. We move into construction and then close out. But if you look at these timelines, we talk to people in the planning phase and then typically don't talk to them for one to two years. Before we move into construction, which is, boom, it's right there in your face, and it's actually. And it's actually kind of the shortest segment of a project's life cycle. And that's when most people are aware of a project. And then the closeout takes quite a long time, can be one month on a very small project, versus when we deal with federal funds, it can actually go to six, seven years to close out all the paperwork. We take all these projects and we have to figure out our priorities because we obviously have way more project needs than we have available funding. So when we look at things like immediate life safety, some of the long-term safety issues, maintaining our operations and other improvements, we actually do projects in all these categories, but when we come up with an immediately life safety problem, those projects tend to be elevated for obvious reasons. I will say, at this point, most of our projects fall into the category of maintaining operations. They include things that keep the lights on, on our buildings or HVAC systems, roof replacements, and just generally the types of things that keep us going and able to offer the same services that we've been offering for years. We have generally been told by the city council to deal with our worst issues first. There is not a focus in the city of Evanston on doing things on a ward-by-ward basis, but more looking at issues like equity, access, and just generally solving the problems that are the largest or more, most impactful to people. Finally, I did want to talk briefly about CARP implementation. This is something that is really baked into our CIP, and I just included a few examples of projects on the slides, but actually, many, many projects have some aspect of CARP because as it is an adopted plan, as we are going through doing projects, we're trying to consider how to implement the goals that are in CARP into our projects. An example would be that we have a goal in CARP for municipal facilities that we will be carbon neutral by 2035. That is 14 years away, 13 if we consider we're working on the 22 CIP right now. And the average life cycle of an HVAC system in Evanston facilities is really at around 20 years. So we already know that as we implement HVAC systems, we need to be addressing the CARP goal of carbon neutrality now, or when we get to 2035, we're just not going to be there. So we are reading the adopted plans and policies, and we are constantly trying to figure out how to conform our projects to the standards that are adopted by the city And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much. We'll begin with Councilmember Reed.
Yeah, thank you, Laura. Let me just say, housekeeping, you know, I think we're starting to lose both people and attention, and in the interest of making sure that this conversation is, is beneficial as the last one, I'm gonna, I'm gonna switch the timers back on and sort of go back to the regular rules. I will be flexible as needed because this is also a critical discussion, but I think we'll ultimately do it better if we can keep it, you know, if we can, what we lose in, in making it quick, we might gain in, in a lack of cognitive decline that'll occur as the night goes on. So with that, the timers are back on. Go ahead, Councilmember Reed. Great. So the total capital, total funding requested for the capital improvement plan is just over 64 million, correct?
Yes.
Yes. And what would we need, and we know this is not enough to keep up with, you know, keeping our roads paved and our sewers and all of our other infrastructure up to, you know, the, the standard that we would like to. Agreed?
Yes.
Yes. So what, what do you think that number would be on an annual basis? So if we're spending 64.3 million now to, you know, fall short essentially, and we're still not, this number isn't even starting to make a dent in our unfunded infrastructure liabilities, correct?
Yes.
So what, yeah, so I guess my question is, what is, what do, what would the city council, if we were being the most responsible stewards of the public assets that we are responsible for, what would we need to spend on an annual basis to keep up with maintenance?
So I'd actually like to defer that to a budget memo, but I'll tell you why. In our five-year CIP, for example, we tackle maybe a total of eight to 10 park refreshes where we're going in and we're redoing a park. But that's because that's, we know what we can bear as a cost, and we probably can't even do that. In reality, we should probably be doing twice as many of those right now. And so I'd like to take the opportunity to really review it. I would guesstimate that we'd be closer to $100 million a year, but it also depends quite a bit on what level of service we want to provide in our parks and in our facilities.
So there's potential that we're, you know, spending, you know, almost 30 million or you know, maybe 35 million short of what we need to be spending roughly?
Yes.
Which is a substantial number. And I think taking that into, you know, keeping that in mind, I think we need to, this, this council needs to be really understanding of the fact that we need to raise additional revenue and look at progressive ways to raise additional revenue and make sure that we're keeping up with our, you know, I think, again, having safe bridges and roads and clean drinking water and facilities that are conducive to a safe, fun experience for our community is extremely important, and, and one of the basic things that we need to be doing as government. And so I really think, you know, that we need to really keep that in mind and, and look at ways that we can increase funding to our capital improvements. And I'm sure my time is starting to run low, but I also am curious about, I know we had a discussion earlier this term, as early in this term as we could get, we're only five months in, about ending the practice of bonding out for all of our capital improvement projects, including for staffing. So is that, is that being taken into consideration in the 2022 capital improvement program?
There's no staffing salaries that are included in the general obligation bond that's being issued. Those salaries are shown as being funded from the general fund. I will say that I don't necessarily agree that we should be issuing this much debt. This is the funding source we have, and particularly for parks and facilities, this is pretty much the only funding source we have. And we're, in reference to your previous question, we're in a situation where we have like five buildings that are coming close to being in a crisis situation where we probably won't be able to maintain operations. One of those is the animal shelter, which we previously discussed, the civic center, which is coming up on the council's schedule for discussion, but also the service center, which we're doing a master plan for, which will come up with a lot of projects that need to be funded in order to be able to support our municipal operations, noise cultural arts center, which we have no plan for at the moment, really, to speak of. And then the police fire headquarters, which is way too many people in it for the services that are offered in the size of the building. And the building is just older and not able to provide the flexibility it needs to be able to continue delivering services the way we would like. So these are things that are there, and they're, some of these are the issues that this council will have to face, but those are the things that are not being funded or shown yet in the budget.
And my last question is regarding just your, what are other municipalities or kind of model municipalities doing to keep up with their capital improvement funding? Is there some, you know, nugget that you have to share with us that maybe we're not doing, that you think, you know, the council could be doing, you know, whether it's charging for XYZ service? What new revenue do you think we could dedicate to this that would help solve the, the $35 million annual gap that we have?
Given some of the other budget concerns that the council's facing, I'm a little reluctant to just pose solutions because I'm not sure I really know. I will say that we have a lot of facilities. The city of Evanston owns 45 facilities right now, and that is a lot for the city to maintain for the services we deliver, for the size of our city. So I think we have to make decisions as we move forward as to what level of services we want to fund, but not just considering the operations costs, but also considering the capital costs, because we've kicked the can down the road on a lot of facilities issues.
And, thank you, thank you, thank you very much. And then to close, just looking at the chart there, it is quite apparent that, you know, the largest expenditure is, is related to providing infrastructure for cars. Street resurfacing is, I forget, I don't know exactly what percentage of our city land is streets, and of all of the city assets, I think streets make up the largest percentage, or I should say not assets, liabilities, because they are not assets that have their liabilities. And so of all of the city liabilities, streets are one of the largest. So I would imagine, you know, we, we talk about things like parking and other things that are related to cars. I think we have to get serious about understanding that providing infrastructure for vehicles is one of the largest expenditures to the city. And if we are not serious about reducing the number of vehicles in our city, or at least charging what it actually costs the city and the taxpayers to support that infrastructure, we are going to see this whole grow and grow. And what we know is that because of classism and racism, that a lack of funding for this infrastructure disproportionately tends to impact lower-income black and brown folks. And those are the communities that tend to have the lowest quality facilities, the lowest quality roads, while we're subsidizing vehicle and convenience, you know, to the tune of higher asthma rates and all kinds of other environmental costs and health costs for vehicles. So I think we need to really, you know, start turning the page on, you know, how we fund our, our car infrastructure. Thank you.
Sure. I do want to say that street resurfacing and transportation also include water main and sewer and the other utilities. And, but the staff is mindful of what you said. And on all of our large projects, we are trying to include those multimodal bike and pedestrian facilities. And then recently, with the council's direction to keep moving forward on our sidewalk improvement, we have dramatically increased sidewalk and mass transit support costs in our CIP. But still, they play a small portion of the total goal.
Thank you.
Thank you. And just for record purposes, Councilmember, you nailed it. That was five minutes almost on the button. So remember that if you have to speak again. Next is Councilmember Nusma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Reed, for talking, getting into the CARP lane again. I'll intend that pun. Laura, I'd like to talk about funding for street resurfacing, and as I understand, like a lot of the funding, you can tell me what percentage comes from the state through the motor fuel tax program. Is that correct?
Yeah, we fund approximately $1.5 million in a typical year for motor fuel tax. The state has, and that's just street resurfacing. The state has given us additional funding over the last couple of years. So this year, we're funding over $2 million through motor fuel tax to, in order to, I don't want to say burn, but to fully utilize that funding that we've received. On our larger projects, which would include things like the Main Street corridor improvements that are coming up, the ones on Sheridan Road that were done a couple of years ago, we're looking at Chicago Avenue, Oakton, Church Street, those are more multimodal projects, and they're really expensive. So in that case, we seek federal funding, and we still end up paying approximately 20% to 30% of the cost, which is way better than paying 100% of the cost. Those are typically done through general obligation bonds to fund the matching costs.
Still pretty, still pretty expensive, though.
It, it is.
Yeah. So with, with the state funding street resurfacing through a tax on gasoline sales, do you know what the long-term prognosis is as we shift on a national level towards electric vehicles and away from the use of gasoline? Like, beyond our pay grade here in the city of Evanston, but the state's gonna have to come up with a way of funding street maintenance that relies on some other source of revenue.
They do. So far, they have, they've been finding ways to increase the motor fuel tax budget through programs called the Transportation Renewal Fund and the Rebuild Illinois. These, I think, are generally funded through the state diverting other sources of funding or selling general obligation bonds themselves and then rebating that back to the municipalities. So the state is aware of the issue. I'm not sure that they have, I'm not sure what their long-term plans are for dealing with that, but it is something that I think is on people's mind.
Good, good. I'm glad it's on, on your radar screen. Just.
Just, can I just?
Sure.
Laura, am I remembering correctly that our motor fuel tax has actually dropped over the last few years? Or is that, or is that just cyclical with the price of gasoline?
So 10 years ago, the state was pushing out, they pushed out in several packets additional motor fuel tax funds. Then there was a drop.
Right.
So it wasn't the base rate that dropped. It was more that they were giving a lot of extra, and then they stopped that for a while.
Okay.
Now they're back to giving us extra, which we are gratefully taking to resurface our streets.
Yeah. Thank you. Just a, a general comment. Thank you for your explicitly calling out sustainability goals and CARP. I appreciate that. I think this is a model for the other departments in the city to always be thinking about climate action and environmental justice as we go about business of the city. And just as a, as a point of information, what happens now with the climate or with the, with the capital plan? Is this coming, this is for discussion tonight, is it coming back to us for approval at some point?
The capital plan basically gets adopted with the regular budget. It's a portion of the regular budget, and so the city council can decide to have as much or as little further discussion as they want on it. But any questions that come, we will certainly try to address them.
Great. Thank you. I'm done.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who has questions about the capital improvement program? Seeing on, thank you very much. She'll be in touch going forward. This is very helpful information. We appreciate it a great deal. This brings us to call of the wards, starting with Councilmember Ravel.
Oh, sorry, I missed a light. Councilmember Kelly.
So I just wanted to comment not necessarily about capital improvements, but about the whole budget process. And, I mean, our city professes, right, to have at the top of our priorities, supporting our most vulnerable residents of Evanston. And, and I'm just trying to understand why it is that this council can't actually budget the maybe four to $5 million that would be, that's the equivalent in the TIF, like actually budget in order to support those members, those most vulnerable members of our communities in order to have a fund that's about strengthening those communities. And I, I really believe that if we talked about belt tightening and we really worked on and put our heads together, we could actually come up with that money and create that fund. And I'm, I'm just a little disappointed that, you know, we're, that we're really not, rather, we're preferring to go to a relatively, I'm sorry, but controversial and convoluted TIF without any real concrete plans, instead of actually looking at how we can budget. Budgeting for that, budgeting in a way to strengthen a fund that strengthens our most vulnerable communities is far more profound and meaningful and a much greater commitment by this city if we budget for it rather than TIF it out. And I just really want to, you know, put that out there right now, and I ask that we, that we really consider this. I hope, Melissa, on the finance and budget, we can discuss this, but that's where I really feel we need to go. Not through TIFs, but we need to make this a fundamental piece of our budget. Thank you.
Thank you. So we go to call of the wards, starting with Councilmember Ravel.
Well, I'd just like to call the community's attention to the fact that we have a wonderful new mural in the seventh ward on the northwest corner of Central and Green Bay Road. It's on the side of the Maya Papaya Building. It features three local birds of concern, and it's a project of the Art Encounter with support from the Evanston Arts Council, the Evanston North Shore Bird Club, and the Central Street Businesses. And it was done by Chicago artist Slang Jones, and it's really, it's really a great, a great mural. And the shops on Central Street have these wonderful bookmarks that talk about the mural and birds of concern, as well as things that all of us can do to help birds survive and thrive. So I just encourage you all to take a look northwest corner of Central Street and Green Bay Road.
Councilmember Reed.
Yes. I want to make a closing comment about some of our budget discussions, particularly our improvement. I think that as we're continuing to move through this budget process, while I am a I am certainly not of the belief that governments are businesses, we do have a financial responsibility to our taxpayers. We have a financial responsibility to our most vulnerable residents to ensure that we're supporting them. And I think one of the things we have to start thinking about and looking at, we have to, you know, kind of get a business sense about what we're doing. And we have to start looking at things as, almost like products, and figuring out how we pay for them. The roads that we provide for folks is a product, just like an iPhone. And Apple wouldn't sell you an iPhone without figuring out what their costs are to, to provide that service to you. And I think we need to make sure that we're figuring out the cost to provide the services of Rose and others, and other services that we provide and make sure that we're charging effectively for those services, to be able to provide those and others, to make sure we're taking care of our most vulnerable residents. And I hope we can do that through this, start doing that through this budget process. You know, and then lastly, I'll say, Councilmember Kelly, if, when we look at the budget, that, you know, the reason we can't provide the 4 to 5 million dollars in a manner that is going to be consistent over 23 years is because of the unfunded liabilities that we already have. So to close out, I have a ward meeting, eighth ward meeting on the 28th at 6:00 PM. So we will have ward meetings in the eighth ward on the last Thursday of every month, except for November and December. We'll figure out those meetings at another point, but be on the lookout for ward meetings on the last Thursday of every month at 6:00 PM. This one is virtual. You can find the link on the city's website. We are, there are community members in the eighth ward who are putting together a Halloween gathering at Clyde Brummel Park, a trick-or-treat gathering for, for the young folks. Eighth warders and folks across the city are welcome to come to Clyde Brummel Park. Information can be found on Facebook. We're also, folks are also looking for contributions to help support providing a safe and fun Halloween for eighth ward children who, in some cases, particularly on my side of the ward, on the eastern side of the ward, where there are a lot of apartment buildings, what I've heard is children often can't trick or treat in their own neighborhoods there and have to go to other neighborhoods. So it's a great event to help folks stay in their neighborhood and build community. And so we're hoping to see eighth warders there as well as get contributions. And all of that information can be found on our eighth ward Facebook page and other groups. So please find it there. And then lastly, the Howard and Main Grant Survey has gone out. So I'm encouraging business owners, I'm sure all of the Howard business owners are watching right now, to fill out that survey. I will be stopping by some of the businesses there to encourage folks to take care, to take advantage of those grant opportunities and looking forward to discussing that more at future meetings. Those are my announcements. Thank you.
Councilmember Kelly.
Sorry. First ward meeting this Thursday, a virtual meeting on Thursday. And we're also convening our first subcommittee of planning and development on housing. And the following Thursday, we'll be having a first ward meeting just on the budget. And by the way, and also the Finance and Budget Committee meeting, I believe, will be starting next week. And Councilmember Reed, I hope I don't have to remind you, I know you know very well, of many projects where we spent many millions of dollars, exorbitantly high costs on projects that did not reflect our equity goals. And that's exactly what I'm talking about. I think we need to be able to examine and prioritize and understand our priorities and make sure that our budget is in fact reflecting our priorities. And I look forward to doing that at the Finance and Budget Committee. Thank you.
Councilmember Braithwaite.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to thank our, our city manager, Kelly, for attending the second ward meeting. It was our first opportunity just to begin talking high level about our budget. So I'm looking forward to a follow-up meeting where we can take a deeper dive into areas and I'll make sure to outline them. As well, I would ask you to pass along to the staff just my, our appreciation for what we heard. This is a great beginning to what will be a much deeper conversation. So thank you to your staff. That's it.
Councilmember Burns.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two announcements. Tomorrow, there will be, I will be hosting a Zoom meeting for third ward residents and anyone else on one topic, crime. We've had two carjackings in the last week in the third ward, and there has been a significant uptick in a number of other crimes that have made everyone much more concerned. So we are going to be talking with the police department via Zoom tomorrow evening, starting at 5:30. Then our regular town hall ward meeting will be on Thursday, October 28th. That one will be in person. And because we don't have a location in the ward that is ADA accessible and open right now, our regular location, Lincoln School, is not yet having outside meetings. We are going to be meeting in the main library in the large conference room. And I, there'll be, there's parking in the, at the library. And I think it's really important for all of us to meet together. So tomorrow night will be via Zoom and Thursday, October 28th, will be in person. And I look forward to hearing and seeing everyone. Thank you.
Councilmember Nusma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one quick announcement. The next meeting of the fourth ward residents will be Tuesday, November 2nd, 7:00 PM, regular place at the Robert Crown Center. And we will specifically be addressing the city budget at that meeting with representatives from the city staff there to guide us through the discussion. Thanks.
Councilmember Burns.
Next fifth ward meeting, October 28th, 7:00 PM, at Gibbs Morrison, 7:00 PM. There will be a, more information on the, on the city calendar about a hybrid option. We're still trying to work that out. But again, October 28th, 7:00 PM. Did want to respond, use this time to respond to my colleague. Anytime TIF is brought up, I know folks love the TIF conversation. I'm happy to respond. So I just want to be clear, the council member talked about a fund, that we need a fund. And I'm happy to say that, that TIF is a fund. It's, that's what it is. It's a TIF fund. So we have a financing tool that, the good thing about it is that instead of that, the city of Evanston being the only one allocating funds, the way TIF works, of course, is that all the taxing bodies that, that pool from a certain given, given area are, are chipping in towards this goal. So funds that would have otherwise been diverted all around the county will now be focused in on, on one area in the fifth ward. And because all the different taxing bodies are chipping in, we can accumulate a lot more money than we could if just one city did it, if just one taxing body did it. And so instead of further, further burdening, city of Evanston taxpayers to expect the city alone to raise anywhere from 30 million, if you listen to some of the activists, to 83 million dollars over the next 23 years is what, which is what our TIF consultants are projecting. We're working with our partners, other taxing bodies, Cook County, Oakton, District 65, 202, to say, hey, we have a collective interest in making sure that this area that has 30% of the residents living below the poverty line, that have only 20% that go on to graduate from a four-year college, that, that we have a shared, we have a shared interest in ensuring that we're creating affordable housing and workforce development, et cetera. So I just wanted to correct the record on that. And this idea about a plan, this is brought up a lot. TIF is a financing tool. We have plans, right? Comprehensive plans, affordable housing plans, consolidated plans, on and on and on and on. We need to update those plans, which we're doing, right? We got a, we talked to the staff, we heard from staff even today about hiring a consultant to help us run a comprehensive plan. So we have plans. I agree, we need to update our plans. And the way this particular financing tool, tool works is that those plans will actually inform how the TIF money is allocated. Along with a TIF pan, committee of representatives, both in the TIF, who live in the TIF boundary, outside the TIF boundary, informed by ex officio, non-voting members, which will be staff, will collectively kind of work on these plans, work on developing home repair guidelines, et cetera. So we won't, as a council, make all these decisions ourselves. We're going to really rely on staff and the community to, as a whole, to work on these plans and inform how we use TIF funds. But here's what is 100% sure. We need funds, right? Every, at the end of every plan, at the end of it, what it's going to say is, we need funding to implement the plan. And what I would encourage you to do, Councilmember Kelly, and all my colleagues here, as well as the community, is talk to somebody that, that worked towards implementing, creating the Climate Action Resiliency Plan. And ask all those members who committed the time and effort and the energy to developing that plan, if they would have preferred, before they spent all that, that time and energy and focus, if they would have known before, beforehand, that the city or some entity had funding for them to move on all of these great ideas. Because what I'm getting in my email, and I know you are too, is, we need funding. That's what that community is telling us. We, everybody in this, in this, on this dais, I know, has been getting emails from that community saying, hey, we need funding. We need to set aside our funding. We need to set aside funding in our budget. And so what's important is that we make a commitment by will that shows that, that we have the political will to invest in an area that has been underserved and overlooked for decades. And before we drag them through another planning process that can be shelved, that we are going to identify a source of funding to do the work after they commit the time to helping us create it. Thank you.
Councilmembers Huffington.
Noor report.
Thank you. Just before we break, you know, obviously, y'all get time during Call of the Ward to do whatever you choose to do with it. I would just say that we have a lot of time to debate issues. And, you know, we do that at length and robustly. And I'm not sure how beneficial it is to use Call of the Ward's time to additionally debate those issues, but that's obviously not, not my choice to make. With that, I want to again thank everyone on the council for really robust engagement in this absolutely critical discussion. Want to thank our entire staff for the information that you gave tonight, for the preparation that was done, and for the work that will be done going forward. And seeing no further business to come before us, the October 18th special meeting of the Evanston City Council stands adjourned.